Good afternoon and welcome to today's hearing on Criminal Justice Joint with Aging. At this time, please place electronic devices on vibrate or in silent mode. If you want to testify, please come to the front, to the sergeant in arms, and fill out this testimony slip. Thank you, Chair. We may begin.
Good morning. I'm Councilmember Crystal Hudson, Chair of the Committee on Aging. I want to thank Criminal Justice Committee Chair Carlina Rivera, who's currently out on parental leave, for agreeing to hold this extremely important joint oversight hearing on Justice in Aging: Reentry Issues for Older New Yorkers. And I'd like to acknowledge that we are here with Councilmember Lynda Lee. Before going any further, I want to acknowledge that today's hearing centers on a range of very sensitive issues. Many incarcerated and formerly incarcerated individuals, some of whom are here today to share their personal experiences, have been deeply affected by their incarceration. They deserve a supportive environment at this hearing, and so I ask my colleagues and everyone in the room today to speak and act with compassion and empathy. I also want to take a moment to honor the memory of 65-year-old Marvin Pines, who tragically died in DOC custody on February 4th. Marvin Pines's death was the product of a system that is completely failing to provide adequate medical care. Mr. Pines should be alive today. We grieve his loss, and our thoughts are with his family and the dozens of families grieving the loss of their loved ones in DOC custody. An increasing body of research indicates that warehousing people for decades is a counterproductive response to deterring criminal behavior. Most older adults in prison were sentenced in their teens, twenties, and thirties, and often were the victims of violence or experienced trauma before they committed harm. As a response to criminal behavior, extreme prison sentences are inconsistent with scientific findings that have shown people age out of crime by the time they reach their 40s. Imprisonment rates for sentenced incarcerated people have steadily declined since 2004. Despite this decline, the rate of incarceration among older adults has surged in recent decades. From 1999 to 2016, the number of people 55 and older in state or federal prisons increased by 280%. In New York State prisons, despite an overall decline in the prison population, the proportion of older adults in the system has steadily increased. According to advocates, there are currently approximately 8,000 individuals aged 50 and older in New York State prisons. This amounts to one in every four incarcerated people being an older adult, an increase from 12% of the prison population in 2008. At the city level, as of February 2023, approximately 12% of the nearly 6,000 people in DOC custody are older than 50. One study showed that over 50% of people 65 and older have served more than 10 years consecutively. Between 1984 and 2017, the number of people serving life sentences more than quadrupled. Parole is denied to a large majority of parole applicants in the state, further ensuring that the prison population ages and that older adults remain in prison. Older adult incarceration is a crisis, and the state needs to act now. That's why we're considering my resolution today in support of two important pieces of state legislation, the Fair and Timely Parole Act and the Elder Parole Act. The Fair and Timely Parole Act would create a presumption of release for parole-eligible incarcerated persons unless there is a reasonable public safety reason to keep them in prison. The Elder Parole Act would establish parole consideration for people at least 55 years old who have served 15 consecutive years in prison. It is estimated that the parole justice bills together would save the state $522 million per year, which is larger than the entire budget for the New York City Department for the aging. These are necessary and critical reforms that will help ensure that the incarcerated older adult population declines and that this population can re-enter society and live their lives with dignity. New York spends hundreds of thousands of dollars annually per older adult in prison. This money could be reinvested in our communities and used to improve the health and safety of New Yorkers, or it could be used to provide resources, supports, and education in efforts to eliminate the school-to-prison pipeline. It could be spent to help prevent us from having hearings like this in the future because we made the decision to invest in our communities instead of a system rooted in racism that destroys lives and does very little, if anything, to improve public safety. We are here today to hear from the administration on how they are assisting older adults to transition out of incarceration and back into our communities, but we are also here to hear directly from formerly incarcerated older adults on their experiences, both while incarcerated and following their release. Today, we hope to learn more about the reentry services and supports that the city provides this population, as well as the work of direct service providers and advocates on the ground who work with formerly incarcerated older adults every day. And we cannot forget the incredible work that families, friends, and communities do to support people in reentry. We see you, and we thank you. Let's be clear: Leaving people in prison while we work to improve the reentry landscape is not a fair or viable option. The city must take a holistic approach to ensuring that our communities thrive and that we are not simply streamlining or improving reentry services while not addressing the root issues of criminalization and incarceration. My hope is that this hearing is a productive step towards a more just future, but it cannot be the only step. Thank you to the advocates and members of the public who are joining us today, and thank you to representatives from the administration for joining us. I would also like to thank my staff, Casey Addison and Andrew Wright, Aging Committee staff, Christopher Pepe, Chloe Rivera, Ostrid Chan, and Kelly Welch, Criminal Justice Committee staff, Jeremy Whitman, as well as our data operations unit. I'll now read a statement by Chair Rivera. I will now be reading a statement on behalf of the Criminal Justice Chair Rivera, who is unable to join us for today's hearing as she is out on parental leave. "As a result of outdated and racist law and order policies, the share of the jail and prison population comprised of older adults has been steadily rising in recent decades. Right now, despite the fact they pose little to no risk upon release, 1 in 4 New Yorkers in prison is an older adult. Many of these individuals have been scholars, teachers, and mentors while in custody, and yet they continue to languish and often die in unsafe conditions. This trend towards a graying prison population is a result of an unjust system, badly in need of reform, that prioritizes endless punishment over healthy communities. There is no justification for having approximately 8,000 older adults behind bars in New York. As we work to bring our elders home, New York should also be assisting families and communities by providing comprehensive reentry services. Studies show that incarcerated individuals are nearly 10 times more likely to experience homelessness or unstable housing. Our city must ensure we have enough safe, affordable housing with appropriate social service support when necessary to accommodate everyone returning from jail or prison. Given the accelerated aging process that occurs when a person spends time in custody, New York City must be diligent in ensuring this medically vulnerable population has access to appropriate health and mental health resources. Initiatives like MACJ's Community Justice Reentry Network should serve the needs of everyone who returns from custody, including older adults who might need specialized training to adapt to the modern workforce. These are just some ways our city can enhance the reentry landscape to support older adults, but again, our bedrock conviction must always be to decarcerate. In New York City, that means staying the course, reducing the population, and closing Rikers Island. At the state level, to ensure that more of our friends and neighbors can return home and age with dignity in their communities, our representatives in Albany should immediately pass the Elder Parole and Fair and Timely Parole Act. As Chair of the Committee on Criminal Justice, I am proud to co-sponsor Resolution 241, which urges swift passage of these reform measures. Passing these bills would save our state money and reform the broken parole system that has left too many of our elders behind bars." I will now turn it over to counsel to administer the oath.
You're ready? If you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and to respond honestly to council member questions? Great, you can proceed. Thank you.
Sorry, just before you proceed, I just want to acknowledge that we've been joined by councilmembers Christopher Marte and Darlene Mealy. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Hudson, and members of the Committees on Criminal Justice and Aging. My name is David Golden, and I am the General Counsel of the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, MACJ. I'm pinch-hitting here this morning for our Chief of Staff, Nora Daniel, who had intended to testify but unfortunately was unable to join us this morning. I am joined today by Sarah Cassell, the Director of Diversion and Reentry Initiatives, and Anna Calabrese beside her, the Executive Director of Reentry and Culture Change, my colleagues at MACJ. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the reentry services that help returning New Yorkers restart their lives post-incarceration. Reentry services are a crucial component of our city's public safety continuum, providing the supports that help promote safety for all. The Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice advises Mayor Adams on criminal justice and public safety policies. MACJ serves as Mayor Adams's representative to the courts, district attorneys, defenders, state criminal justice agencies, and other system actors. Our office brings together community and institutional stakeholders to address the systemic issues that undermine the safety and stability of our neighborhoods. MACJ moves the city forward by implementing Mayor Adams's vision for a safe and fair city for all New Yorkers. MACJ has revamped and strengthened reentry programming to improve transition and release planning services for those leaving city and state custody. Our reentry programming helps individuals thrive and gives them the necessary resources and opportunities to avoid future criminal justice involvement. By providing these services and addressing the needs of those reentering their communities, we aid in the individual's post-incarceration success. The city has invested $30.5 million into this programming, building on the success of the Jail-to-Jobs Reentry Services Program launched in 2018. During incarceration, individuals work with transition coordinators to create discharge plans for when they are released, and also work with reentry mentors who help facilitate the reentry process on an individualized basis. Reentry mentors develop relationships with released individuals to encourage participation in relevant services and programs. In January 2020, the program was expanded to serve more people and increase the breadth and depth of services offered, which included the enhancement of services that begin in jail and continue into the community post-release, expansion of wraparound social services and connections to care, creating additional supports for individuals on the day of release from jail, and hiring more staff at contracted nonprofit organizations who have lived experience in the criminal justice system to serve as peer mentors. In January 2022, we expanded our reentry initiatives to also provide holistic reentry services to those returning to New York City from state prisons. Through this expansion, we are now able to provide discharge planning prior to release from prison, transportation from prisons to nonprofit service provider organizations in the community, and an array of vocational, educational, and therapeutic services. This work supports individuals impacted by the criminal justice system, providing them a range of different services and programming to deter reentry into our criminal justice system. We partner with 10 nonprofit organizations that work to ensure that they provide key holistic reentry services. This network of nonprofit organizations offers employment services such as paid transitional employment and internships, job training and job readiness workshops, connections to permanent employment, resume writing, and interview prep. They also provide holistic supportive services such as benefits enrollment, individual and group counseling, legal services, case management, family support and reunification, connections to mental, behavioral, and physical care, substance use treatment, housing assistance, and more. This initiative serves approximately 8,000 people per year of all ages, including older adults. Our reentry initiative is inclusive, also providing gender-specific, TGNC-specific programming. Effective and appropriate reentry services are necessary for people who are returning from jail or prison. This administration is committed to supporting older adults who are returning, and we are eager to work with the council to help provide these critical services. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of our reentry work, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you so much. I'd just like to acknowledge that we've been joined by councilmembers Abreu, Narcisse, and Carr. And I'll start with some questions and then turn it over to my colleagues. But New York State classifies incarcerated individuals as older adults starting at the age of 50. At what age does the City Department of Correction consider a person to be an older adult?
To the extent that there are questions for the Department of Correction, we're going to defer to them because we're not speaking for them, and I know that they will be in contact with the committee to provide answers to those questions.
Okay, so let me ask you then, from a MACJ perspective, is there a particular age that you consider somebody to be an older adult?
Give me one more.
I think, having listened to the work of advocates and experts in this field, we use the same definition that you're talking about.
So 50? 50? Okay, great. How many older adults are currently in city custody? And do you know if that population is increasing or decreasing?
In terms of current population, so there are 300, at least as of February 8th, there were 333 people who were between 51 and 55 years old.
Sorry, can you repeat that? 330 people?
Yep, between 51 and 55 years old, and then 56 and above was 330, 393 people.
Thank you, and I'd like to acknowledge that we've also been joined by Councilmember Do you know if that population is increasing or decreasing?
We don't have that information at the moment. We can check and get back to the committee.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. And what if any screening and intake is done to account for older adults in city custody?
Again, that's really a question for the Department of Correction to answer.
Okay.
And I would add Correctional Health Services, a very important piece there, too.
Okay. How, if at all, does MACJ coordinate with agencies to prevent ruptures in care and services for older New Yorkers incarcerated in local jails?
So through the Community Justice Reentry Network and our network of 10 service provider organizations that we fund, they all are in custody, providing transitional planning to folks who are leaving and going back into the community, and then are connecting with people, linking them to services once they're back, and individualized case management, so connecting them with services for all the needs that they have.
So, but that's with the 10 organizations, but not necessarily other city agencies that you're coordinating with?
So we're in close contact with DOC, of course, since those providers are in custody. My colleague will talk about our coordination with CHS as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's very important to note that for many of the complex health and mental health issues that older adults are facing coming out of jail and prison, a lot of coordination happens through Correctional Health Services. So I think that they would be the best equipped to speak to that larger, really integral coordination, but Sarah mentioned it from our end.
Okay, but so MACJ doesn't coordinate with, like, DIFTA or any other city agencies to address the needs of older adults and the services and care?
We do coordinate with DIFTA, and we're part of a task force that I'm sure we'll talk about together with DIFTA.
Okay. And any other city agencies?
Well, Correctional Health Services, Department of Corrections.
Yeah, those, I understand. So just those three, basically? DOC, CHS, and DIFTA?
I think the range of city agencies, depending on the needs, so DSS, DHS.
Okay.
DOHMH, yeah, depending on the particular issue that we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you. Just trying to get a sense of whether or not there's coordination. So it sounds like you're underselling yourself, because it sounds like you're coordinating with a lot of agencies.
Yes.
So we'd just like to get that on the record. Thank you. Does the city track how many older adults are coming to New York City each year following their release from state prisons? And if so, can you share those numbers?
It's really a state docs question.
So the city doesn't track that, then?
We don't have a way to track it the way that state docs does, because they're doing the releases, and so, and they're going to, they're mostly going to parole, but if people are just being released, there's not a way to track everyone who's coming back.
So in the testimony, you stated that you expanded your reentry initiatives to also provide holistic reentry services to those returning from New York City from state prisons. So how does MACJ make the connection to those serving state prison sentences?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So the Osborne Association is working in 24 state prisons. If you're interested, we can get you the list of those prisons afterwards, and they're providing discharge planning, so connecting with folks while they're in custody, and then making the connections to our 10 organizations that are in New York City as they're coming home. We also fund six of those 10 organizations to provide transportation back to New York City for folks who are coming back and don't have family or friends that they want to come pick them up. And one of our providers is also, has an office right by Port Authority, so for folks that are coming back on public transportation from, you know, the really, really far prisons, then that provider is connecting with them as soon as they're coming back.
Okay, so it sounds like there is a way, then, that for you to connect to the people who are returning to New York City from state prisons, and that that is happening?
Yes.
Or you do have a...
Yeah, it's absolutely happening. They're contracted to serve 1,000 people a year. We know that that's not the full number of people who are coming back, but that's what we are able to provide now.
Okay. So my question was, does the city track how many older adults are coming to New York City each year following their release from state prisons? So you would say roughly at least 1,000 people a year is what you're tracking?
So the 1,000 isn't only older adults. That's a reentry initiative for everybody.
Okay.
And so we know how many people Osborne is able to connect with through this initiative, but that's not everyone who's coming out.
Can you describe the ways in which the incarcerated older adult population differs from the general incarcerated population? And are there any particular considerations taken into account for incarcerated older adults? So essentially, is everybody treated the same? Or are there other, you know, is there more care and consideration for those who might be older adults?
Yeah, thank you for that question. It's a really important one, and in no way, meaning to punt this back to other agencies, but I just think it's very important to note that a lot of the really deep-rooted services for complex health and mental health care happen outside of the auspices of the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice and happen within Correctional Health Services. So I think that's just a really important thing to note. Of course, our reentry services are tailored to the needs of the individual as well. So when you're asking about specific needs of an older population, of course, we're talking about health, we're talking about oftentimes mental health and the sort of collateral consequences of long incarcerations, frequent incarcerations, talking about housing, family connections, all of which are, you know, a suite, part of our suite of services. But again, I just do want to be clear that for some of the really clinical services, that's not under our purview.
Understood, but my understanding was that DOC prepped you all for the hearing, and so if that didn't happen, did that happen? I understand that, you know, you are not Department of Correction or Correctional Health Services, but considering the topic, you know, and you all are here, you know, representing the administration, so, you know, it'd be helpful if we can get some information for some of these questions.
Chair, if I could just explain, we have been in touch with DOC, and we have prepared with them for this hearing, but we have not listed it from them, and they haven't provided us with the kind of detailed answers to those kinds of questions. So we're referring a question over to DOC or saying that we'll get back to you, that's why.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to misspeak on the specificities of those services, but I think, you know, what we have said is, of course, reentry services for this population need to take into account robust health and mental health services, connections to community care, connections to housing, and that's something that we coordinate across our agency and with other agencies like DOC and CHS.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. "The incarceration rate for individuals aged 50 years and older has surged in recent decades. The share of this population in state prisons has more than doubled from 2008 to 2021. A 2018 Osborne Association report outlined racial disparity, long sentences, parole denials, and a punitive, rather-than-healing-centered-and-trauma-informed approach to addressing uncertainty regarding violence and risk as reasons behind the incarceration of older adults. What's the city's response to the contributing factors identified by Osborne?"
I think the response is sort of in the programs that we run. We've invested heavily in a community-based response with 10 really robust providers with deep expertise in the needs that arise from these terrible circumstances. So I think, you know, our response is sort of in our action.
Okay, so can you describe the efforts to reduce the proportion of incarcerated individuals aged 50-plus?
So I think a part of it, and that was highlighted in the Osborne Report, is also around parole and individual judicial decision and length of sentences, so that's a lot under the state purview. And we, of course, have pretrial diversion programs and alternative to incarceration programs that aim to divert people from incarceration, everyone, but of course, older adults as well. And there are case processing initiatives that are meant to reduce the length of stay so that folks who are held pretrial are able to get to disposition sooner.
Okay, and before I continue with my questions, I'm just going to turn it over to a couple of my colleagues. Councilmember Mealy, and just to remind folks that the time for council member questions is three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, for this important hearing. I only have a quick two questions, but it seemed like they are very unprepared for what I need to know in regards to our older population. Since you say the wraparound services and housing, so are you telling me that these programs will pick up the individuals, drop them off in the city, and then just leave them? Is there any preparation for them to go into stable housing? These are seniors.
Yeah, so it's sort of a two-part question, I think, that you're asking. So first, for while people are incarcerated, they're getting programming inside, and then also discharge planning services. So it's not just, it's not the first time that they're meeting someone when they're being picked up, and then they're, and it obviously works a little bit differently from the state or from the city, but when folks are picked up, then they're brought to either their, you know, where they're going to be residing, or to their parole office.
Ma'am, excuse me. I am not speaking about that. We have asylum seekers here now. When they come here, they have a place to go directly, housing somewhere. What is this, what has the city done for senior incarcerated individuals? Some people come out 85 years old. Are you telling me the city does not have anything in the works or data to say, "We know they can't find housing, they know they practically can't find a job, we're going to at least put them in stable housing"? That's all I want to know. And if not, someone should be getting some data on this. They are not just people that you just push, discard. We have to have some kind of track record of who, where they're going, and if we don't do that, this city is not doing a great job. That's the same way with our seniors. They built this city, and now, once they get older, you just discard them and not have stable living conditions, stable, where they can know, "I did 20 years, now..." Now at least I have a roof over my head.
Thank you for that. Um, and your, your points are very well taken. And MACJ has a $50 million transitional housing initiative that we're currently in the process of standing up.
So we just starting to do it now?
No, we've been doing it for, for many years since 20.
So how many people you have put in stable housing coming directly out of a state prison?
Can get back to you with those exact numbers. I don't want, I don't want to misspeak on the state, the state.
Or city. Give it to me. A city. The city right here.
We'll have to, we'll have to get back to you with those numbers. Very, very doable to do, but what I just want to.
It's very doable to do, but this was the opportunity for you to give it to us now. And I feel, um, people have a lot of things to do. And once you come to these hearings, we need the information now that we don't have to keep recidivism, keep coming back, coming back. Come on. Thank you, Chair. This is not enough information for our seniors.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Narcisse?
Good morning, and thank you for being here. Um, this older adults that we're talking about, right? Would obviously have an increased need in health. Right? Services when incarcerated in there. Could you estimate the cost of, um, housing, uh, chronically ill incarcerated person, adult in the prison, in our jails, in New York City? Approximately estimating?
I, I, I hate to say this, uh, but I think we, we'd have to get back to you on that. Again, that's a question that requires some coordination with other city agencies and some deeper analysis. But under, understand the, uh, impetus behind your question, and it's a good one.
I wish we had it today because that would lead me to something else. Because I want to know the data because how much it costs to, for healthcare for a person, older adult in our jail. That's let's say over 75 or 80. So that will lead me to something else. I guess you don't have it. I have to move on. How many, how many incarcerated older adults access the city's job, um, programs that you have?
So we can speak just for the MACJ-funded Community Justice Reentry Network, uh, job services. But there are, of course, so many job programs through small business services and other agencies that we don't have the data on. But the, in terms of, uh, the Community Justice Reentry Network, we have, um, about 1,700 individuals between the age of 50 and 64. Um, and then 65 plus would be about 200 over the last year.
Okay. What metric, um, is used to determine the success of such programming?
So we look at what needs they have coming in and what needs are met. Obviously, folks, you know, the, the population overall have, have various needs and it depends on the individual. So some things as basic as, right, getting your ID when you come out of incarceration. Technology support if you've been away for a long time. Housing, of course, medical care, behavioral health services. So all of those things. And we're, we're tracking to make sure that the needs that folks have when they come in are met.
Understand that I, I, as a nurse, I used to do reentry program and a lot of adults, um, come out. They don't know how to use a phone. They frustrated. They're telling them everywhere they go that, um, you can get it online, you can get it on your phone, and they can hardly even use the new technology that we have. So one of the things that I think we should focus on before we let people come out, they're human beings. At least give them the basic to go. One more question if I may, Chair. Are any special accommodation made in the city programming, I mean, programs for formerly incarcerated older adults? I'm asking you again because I heard it before too. So, thank you. Can you answer that?
Um, could you say a little bit more about what you mean by special accommodations?
Yeah, because they're older. So when they come out, like she was saying before, what accommodation that we make for them? Because technology, education, because a lot of the programs, I used to be a reentry nurse, but a lot of programs that they're working in silo. They're not collaborating for, for someone that been in there for 20, 30 years. So what do you do before you release them? What accommodation that you actually make? Besides you say, okay, this is a number, this is a program to go.
Yeah. So, um, DOC and State Docs would be able to speak more to what they're doing inside. But in terms of the transition of coming out and being in the community, all of the reentry services are very individualized. And so case management is responding to those particular needs that folks have, um, that, that you're of course very well aware of. In terms of the technology question, so we're also funding, uh, John Jay College Institute for Justice and Opportunity. You might be familiar with them. And, uh, so they, we're funding them to do a Tech 101 course. And that's specifically for people who really have been away for a long time and need those basic tech needs. Now they've also started a Tech 201, um, because we know that, that there's really that, that, uh, technology gap and folks need a lot of support there.
My time is up, but I want to know how many people that you have that actually use this kind of program?
Absolutely. We can get that for you.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
No problem. I'm going to go to State Senator Salazar, who I believe is joining us via Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, I just want to say thank you, Chair Hudson, Chair Rivera, members and staff of the respective city council committees on aging and criminal justice for holding this hearing and also for giving me the opportunity to testify. I'm State Senator Julia Salazar. I represent New York's 18th Senate District, including parts of North and East Brooklyn, as well as Queens. I serve as the Chair of the State Senate's Crime Victims Crime and Correction Committee. And I also am the sponsor of the Fair and Timely Parole Act and a co-sponsor of the Elder Parole Bill. Parole is ostensibly a mechanism for the state to decide whether or not an individual convicted of a crime with an indeterminate sentence of incarceration should be released from prison into community supervision. The New York State Board of Parole is the sole entity with the authority to grant or deny release to eligible individuals incarcerated in our state's prisons. If the parole board decides to grant parole to an eligible person, they also, uh, set the parole conditions, including terms under which that person's parole could be revoked due to violation. A fully staffed parole board in New York consists of 19 parole commissioners, but there are currently only 15 commissioners or board members right now, um, as there are currently four vacancies on the board. Data from the Department of Corrections and Community Supervision, it shows that every year the majority of incarcerated individuals legally eligible for parole are denied parole by the board. The percentage of incarcerated New Yorkers granted release after a parole hearing has declined since just before the COVID-19 pandemic, with only about 36% of all interviewed parole candidates granted conditional release by the board in 2021, compared to 40% granted release in 2019. Both of these statistics reflect failures in our state's carceral system, which would, uh, should be preparing individuals for parole and reintegration into society after release, uh, and also reflects systemic failures in the parole process. Today, New York has the third largest population in the country of people serving terms of life imprisonment. Of all the counties in the state, the highest percentage of individuals serving a life sentence right now are from Brooklyn. The Elder Parole Bill would provide that a person of age 55 or older who served at least 15 years of a sentence would have an interview with the Board of Parole to determine whether or not they should be released to community supervision. And that interview would be scheduled to occur within 60 days of their 55th birthday or the last day of the 15th year of their sentence, whichever date is later for that individual. If release is not granted, that person would have a subsequent parole interview no more than 24 months, uh, two years after the denial. The bill would also require the parole board to report quarterly to the governor, the state legislature, and the public about the outcomes of elder parole. Separately, the Fair and Timely Parole Bill would direct the parole board to grant discretionary release on parole unless the eligible individual poses a current and unreasonable risk that cannot be mitigated by parole supervision. And those factors would not be the sole basis of the board's decision. The board would be required to explain in writing the basis for a denial of parole and how risk factors were considered and weighed. I just want to note that neither of the bills, if they were to become law, would automatically grant release to any individual as they would not circumvent the parole process. The impact of these bills instead would be to increase fairness in parole hearings and allow opportunities for individuals, particularly older adults and people already subject to long-term incarceration, to receive a fair parole interview and no longer be condemned to perpetual punishment. Um, I realize that I, I may have used my three minutes.
No, you're fine. You can continue.
Okay, thank you. Um, so i- in short, and, um, looking forward to, to answering any questions about the legislation. I, uh, fully support both the Fair and Timely Parole Bill and the Elder Parole Bill. Both of these pieces of legislation are urgent. It is incumbent on us in the state legislature to, uh, bring these bills to a vote and make sure that, that, um, they are enacted into law and, um, adequately implemented. But I want to just close by, um, reading a very brief statement from an individual who, uh, would not be able to testify at, at any hearing about this as they're currently incarcerated. His name is David. Uh, he's been in prison for nearly 35 years in New York State on a 25-year-to-life sentence. He's been denied parole six times. He said that the parole board has made it crystal clear that the only reason I am still in prison today is because of the nature of my crime. If that is the case, and the record shows unequivocally that it is indeed the case, that means I will die in prison because the nature of a crime will never change, even though I myself have changed. It means I will never be released, no matter what level of rehabilitation or transformation I achieve. This is the sentiment of, of many individuals who are serving, um, long sentences that, that, um, are effectively death sentences in our state's prisons. And we have the opportunity to act, uh, to finally end this injustice. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator, for your powerful testimony. We appreciate you carrying these bills and your support and for being at the hearing this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
So I'm going to, um, does anyone have any questions for the Senator? Okay. No questions at this time. Thank you. So I'm going to go back to, um, uh, to your, your program on emergency reentry hotels. It's our understanding that the city has been quietly phasing out the MACJ Emergency Reentry Hotel Program, which helped reduce the jail population at Rikers Island and provided housing with supportive services that was normally reserved for those who are able to obtain supportive housing. We've heard that MACJ is in the process of converting the four existing emergency reentry hotels into transitional housing. Where are you in that process?
Thank you. Uh, yes, we're very actively engaged in that process. You know, the goal has always been to transition to more sustainable forms of housing. And we expect to have, um, the vast majority of our capacity, uh, up and running this summer.
Okay. So summer 2023. The vast majority, but not all.
I, I just, you know, I want to be, uh, you know, honest. We're, we're working towards being fully online. But, um, you know, there's many moving pieces with, with setting up new housing, of course.
Okay. So just bear with me here, but four existing emergency reentry hotels, so vast majority is like three of them? Roughly?
So the four emergency reentry hotels are sort of part of the larger transitional housing initiative. So all in all, there'll be around 950 beds set up, um, through the transitional housing initiative. The, the reentry hotels are a piece of that. And so when Anna is talking about standing up the, the full program, that's the full 950 beds by the summer.
I see. Okay. Thank you. If this program ends this summer, what will happen to the hundreds of people in the waiting list, on the waiting list, excuse me, and the many more languishing at Rikers Island due to lack of housing? And, and can you tell me how many people are on the waiting list?
Um, I'll let Anna speak to the waiting list and I'll take the other part of the question.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I would like to get back to you with the exact number, um, of folks on the waiting list, but I know we have over 100.
Okay.
And in terms of the other part of your question, the housing is not ending in the summer. It's, it's, it will be fully ramped up, we're hoping by, by the summer. Um, and then it's continued baseline funding going forward.
Sorry, I think the program ending in the summer, which is the Emergency Reentry Hotel Program, that's what.
I think ending is probably a disingenuous way to say it. It's transitioning. The idea has always been to, um, transition from the existing hotel sites into, again, more sustainable sites for the city. And to your really important point about folks coming out of Rikers, we are, you know, this, this housing is responsive to those needs for immediate placement. So we are, we are currently sort of working on how to continue that need for immediate placement for folks coming out of Rikers. So just, just to know that that is a big part of what we are standing up is continuing that off-ramp from Rikers directly to housing.
Right. Um, and I can appreciate that. But how will eligibility criteria be different? And maybe it won't be.
Yeah, we're, we're not expecting the eligibility criteria to be different from, um, from the emergency reentry hotels. It's really just moving to a more sustainable form of that housing.
Okay. If and when the emergency reentry hotels are converted to transitional housing, oh, sorry, I just asked that. Does the city plan to have any transitional housing beds dedicated solely for emergency reentry needs? And if so, how many?
Yeah. Thank you for that question. Um, that's something we're currently working on, the exact sort of, um, right size. But, but yes, um, that's a very important, um, part of this whole plan and always has been.
Do you currently have a definition of, of emergency reentry of like what that, how that's defined?
I think it's similar to what, what you yourself said, is someone directly incarcerated coming out to the community with no other housing. That is a, a big piece of the definition.
Yeah. And I would just add, I think it's about the speed of placement. So making sure that as soon as they have a, a release date, that they are immediately able to access that housing.
Especially for older adults. Um, and just wanted to say, you know, that's, that's always been, um, part of the genesis of this program, was working with folks who were especially vulnerable to the effects of COVID-19, many of whom were, um, older New Yorkers coming out of jail and prison. So, um, to the earlier point that was made, that, that immediacy and that sort of, um, warm handoff has always been a part of the creation of this program.
Okay. And so I know that, uh, some residents of hotels are only able to be released from upstate Doc's custody because certain hotels offered SAR compliant housing. So what will happen of this population of people who are waiting to return home? Or I guess another way of asking is, is, is all of the housing going to be SAR compliant?
We currently have one site that is SAR compliant. Um, and that's always, um, that's always something that the city is looking for, um, how, sites that are workable and that are also SAR compliant. We currently have one.
Do you know how many beds that is? Or how many units it will be?
Yeah, it's approximately 150.
Okay.
We can get back to you with more specifics on that.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm going to go back to Councilmember Mealy, who I think has a couple more questions, and I'll come back.
Thank you, Chair. I only have two questions. How many adults end up in the city homeless shelters after being discarded, discharged from local and state custody? Does New York City agent provide any direct services in homeless shelters?
Um, I think tho- those are questions best, best asked to DHS and to DIFTA, who, who are here today too, so.
Okay. Um, you say six months. Does the city agree that older adults may have specific needs to cater to their potentially more vulnerable health status? If six months, um, you say these programs start helping. If six months, you say these programs start helping the individuals incarcerated coming out, if someone is in a wheelchair, do you get them permanent housing with ADA compliance? Do you have a data of how many people that you have put in stable housing with disabilities?
So again, we'll have to get back to you on the number of people that have gone from our transitional housing into stable housing, and how many of those are older adults?
So we definitely don't have no data really on this population.
Well, again, we can only speak to what is within our purview as an agency. And when you're talking about folks coming home from jail and prison with the need for something like a wheelchair, again, that would be part of their medical needs, which would be covered by Correctional Health Services, who I know are preparing written testimony. I know there's a response coming.
So could you describe the financial support? Describe all financial support options available to formerly incarcerated individuals.
Sure. So through the Community Justice Reentry Network, folks are provided paid transitional employment, job training, which is often paid. They get hygiene kits and...
They get what?
Hygiene kits, so things with basic needs.
Finances. How much money do they get?
So it's hard to say because they're also being set up with all their public benefits, and so it will depend on the person.
Snap, everything.
Exactly. That's right.
So they get all these resources, but what avenue do they go through for, instead of going into the shelter, in permanent housing? Because the majority of the formerly incarcerated ends up in our city homeless shelters. So do you have a percentage of how many people did not go to the shelter and went into permanent housing? Someone has to have this information.
These are really great questions. You know, they're complicated questions, and they're multi-agency questions.
But imagine how many people had COVID in the upstate, downstate, and they were set to be released, and they rather stayed in a facility instead of going on the streets because they didn't have permanent housing. We still haven't addressed... Imagine how many people are incarcerated and do not have family members, or you can see they have someone on record that they have a home to go to. Where do you put those individuals? You keep them, they go straight to the shelter and stay?
Well, what you describe is really the goal for our transitional housing programs. It's to divert someone from having to go...
And we only have one?
No.
Sarah, well, Sarah is the main one right now, right?
No, that's only for folks that have that designation.
Okay. So how do you get that designation? I'm sorry, I was just asking... Okay.
What is the Sarah designation you're asking? That's for folks whose charge is related to a sexually-based offense. That has to do with sort of the geographical constraints on where folks can live.
Thank you. I'll look up.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm gonna go to Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here this morning. I want to get into about the therapeutic housing units at Bellevue, Woodhull, and North Central Bronx hospitals. Would you be prepared to respond to questions, which are prepared for DOC, but I know that you coordinated in some capacity?
I'm sorry, those are Correctional Health and DOC questions.
Could you describe a little about how the coordination between DOC occurs, and not just in preparation for hearings, but just in general?
Yeah, so in terms of in-custody programming and discharge planning, we're very, very closely coordinated, talking all the time. A lot of the providers that we fund to do the transitional planning and the in-community reentry services overlap with the DOC contracted service providers who provide in-custody programming. So we're constantly in communication about sort of the in-custody and moving to reentry kind of referral process.
So then that excludes the medical needs or those requiring medical attention?
Because that's really between DOC and Correctional Health.
Yeah, but by city charter, there is a very bright line between DOC programs and services and Correctional Health programs and services, really in order to protect the privacy and the care of folks who are in custody. Those things do not overlap.
I understand that, but I guess if you could provide some clarity on the housing piece of it, given that there are reentry, there's a reentry hotel program that's transitioning, and then these therapeutic housing units, would that not all fall into one conversation?
Yeah, no, that's a great point, and thank you for that. And yes, so MACJ, our contracted housing providers, our folks on the ground in those housing sites coordinate very closely with Correctional Health Services and DOC at the time of release and beyond to make sure that the care that was started in custody isn't incongruous with what's happening in the community. So yes, of course, that happens on a daily basis.
Okay, so then specifically about, for example, the Bellevue units going live, when will they be ready to accept patients? You wouldn't have the information about that.
Unfortunately, that's not something we have access to.
Okay. So we will follow up with DOC for the responses to these questions because I think they're really critical to the questions that Councilmember Narcisse asked about earlier, and ensuring that the units at Bellevue and then the Woodhull units are prepared and on time to open up in 2023. But thank you so much. That provides some clarity.
Perfect timing. Thank you. And I just want to mention for the record, and thank MACJ and also DIFTA for being here, and I will ask that you join the table because we're gonna ask this for you in just a second. But for the record, we did ask DHS, Correctional Health Services, NICA, libraries, DOC, and state docs to all be present for this hearing, so, if you don't mind.
Should we sit down to make room, or would you like us to all...
Oh, no, you should stay. Thank you.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you so much. Okay, sorry. Thank you for bearing with me. So I would love for you all to describe the coordination process between city agencies, mayoral offices, and contracted providers to serve the formerly incarcerated adult population. And specifically, does NYC Aging proactively reach out to older adults released from incarceration to connect them with case management services?
Good morning. Thank you so much for hosting this hearing today and bringing attention to this important issue, and of course, to highlight the particular needs and services for older adults. We work very closely and deliberately to constantly promote the many services that we have. There are New York City Department for the Aging, which I could talk at length about, and you see it, hopefully, on the trains, the efforts we've made to, around the Join Us campaign, to continue to reinforce and to bring older adults back to our older adult centers and to become aware of Aging Connect and our service system. When an older adult comes into our service system, we're working with them as an individual to respond to the particular needs that they identify and would like support around. Of course, through the Care Task Force, we work very closely with our partners here at MACJ, as well as reentry groups such as Osborne, who I see are here today. I'm fortunate to work as a system to support and respond to the needs of older adults coming back to the community.
Thank you. So that sounds like folks who come to older adult centers and in some way find themselves engaging with NYC Aging, might have access to some resources. But I'm wondering if NYC Aging proactively does any outreach to older adults released from incarceration to then connect them with case management services? Is there like a direct line between folks who are coming out and NYC Aging?
There's not a formal linkage, kind of the way you're describing, Chair. What there is, is this ongoing relationship that we have with our partners, reentry, and our city partners. Of course, within the construct of the Care Task Force, we're always looking at ways to improve and respond to the needs of older adults, including the reentry population. But it's through these relationships.
And you mentioned the campaign that you have and the subway and stuff like that. Is there anything that you do to promote case management services to incarcerated older adults, you know, who are currently incarcerated? So information at Rikers, for example?
We're now working directly with populations that are in Rikers. So what we do is through our city partners, provide the information about the myriad of services and resources that New York City Aging provides, based on the individual needs of the person, so that they have the information and can work to refer and triage as indicated.
Okay, and then how quickly can recently released older adults access case management services in order to obtain public benefits assistance?
Immediately. As soon as someone comes into our system, if you're talking specifically about case management, we have a lot of different services. I think you know, Chairwoman, that case management is very specific in terms of the clients we serve and the functional limitations and the work we do to support aging in place. So if an older adult is formerly incarcerated and they call a case management agency, an intake will be conducted immediately. During the intake process, immediate needs will be identified, which could be things like food, or home care, or benefits and entitlements, and that will be addressed either directly or through a triage-referral partnership during the intake and subsequent conversations.
Okay. And are formerly incarcerated older adults able to fully participate in older adult center programming?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's good to hear. Do any older adult centers offer specific programming or resources for those recently released older adults, or how do OACs otherwise connect with this population, which it sounds like only when they come into an OAC?
So yes, only when they come into the older adult center. We're working with older adults as individuals. I mean, when an older adult walks in, you never know what their history is, what their story is, what their needs are. So our staff, through our provider network, and the hundreds of older adult centers we have out there are trained and supported and responsive to the reentry population. We do have a small amount of providers. For example, I know the Jewish Association for Services for the Age, JASSA, has some specific targeted programming, not directly funded through the city, but that does focus on formerly incarcerated population. But generally speaking, we respond to the needs of the individual, which would absolutely include reentry needs.
Great. And do you have any direct relationship, or I guess working relationship, with MACJ or the Department of Correction as it relates to the incarcerated older adult population?
Through the Care Task Force, I mean, I would say some of us know each other pretty well in terms of thinking through, as a city, how to be most responsive to the needs of this population.
Okay, and I'm gonna, I mean, this would be specific to your agencies, but it's a general question. Are there any city-sponsored services that you're aware of that deny individuals based on criminal history?
No.
No? Okay. NYC Aging's Grandparent Resource Centers provide services for older adults with primary caregiver responsibilities, such as workshop on legal issues and benefits, referrals and information, and peer support groups. Do these centers provide any specific information or resources for grandparents caring for children whose parents are incarcerated?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for bringing attention to the group in general. And we've seen a rise in kinship care during or as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. People are coming into kinship care arrangements for a variety of reasons, certainly incarceration being a significant one. So again, we have skilled social workers and caseworkers that have a pretty deep understanding of the needs of that population and would respond to the older adults or to the youth. It's really a whole family approach, if you will, in order to be responsive to their needs. The Kinship Care Group or the Grandparent Resource Center, they also do a lot of educational work, whether it's with the older adult or with the youth. So this is something that they would absolutely be responsive to. And I think you're probably aware, so many of our Grandparent Resource Center services are targeted to high-crime NICA communities. So this is something we're very intentional and have been, you know, through a long time, through some of the work that originated through the MAP programs, to be responsive to the needs of this population, including the reentry population.
Thank you. And then for MACJ, does MACJ currently receive funding for specialized reentry services focused on older adults for 50-plus?
So our reentry resources are really for everyone, and like we were saying before, it's very individualized. So whatever the individual needs, the providers are set up to address those needs.
So no specific funding for the older adult population?
Right, not specifically.
Okay. And then back to aging. Has NYC Aging ever monitored conditions in which older adults are forced to live in state prisons to better understand their needs upon reentry? For example, I understand there's a unit for people with cognitive impairments and other major illnesses at Fishkill. So are you taking a look at those specific conditions and then using that information to determine the type of services you might need to provide?
That's a great question. Our service system is really focused on community care, responding to the needs of older adults in the community. So that's not, that really goes beyond the purview of what we do.
Okay, and then I guess also a general question for both agencies. Is there anything specifically that you are aware of, whether programs or services, to provide specific resources and information for formerly incarcerated older women? Whether they're like seeking employment, housing, anything like that? I know your services, you know, serve everybody, but is there anything specific for older women?
Well, for women generally, one of our contracted reentry service providers is the Women's Prison Association. Many of our other providers also serve women, but WPA specifically only serves women and DGNC individuals.
This is not a MACJ-funded program, and I know Osborne is in the room today, but just want to mention, you know, the amazing work that Osborne's Elder Reentry Initiative does, that works with women as well as men in custody and in the community. So that would be the best example I can think of.
Okay, thank you. And then just going back to the Care Task Force, that hasn't met in over a year. So can either MACJ or DIFTA give us an update on the status of the task force?
Thank you. Yes, we met as a task force for better part of two years through the height of the pandemic. We did a lot of work together that has informed the programming in both of our reentry housing initiatives, as well as our community reentry... initiatives, as well as our community reentry services. But we haven't convened because I think we sort of came to a natural close, having put together work that, again, informed some of our key programs. I don't know what you would say.
Are you, go for it.
I'm so personally valued, and the agency certainly values the collaboration and partnership and thinking that has culminated through the partnership of people here, as well as people from Osborne and Corrections and all of our city partners. We look forward to continuing that work and thinking to be most responsive to the needs of the older population, which are complex and show up in a lot of ways that came up here in some of the Q and A, financial stability, access to benefits, entitlements, health, mental health, housing.
Is there going to be a report that's issued, then, from the task force?
Well, let me just say, we are interested in continuing the work of the task force. As the witnesses have indicated, that work continues apart from the meetings of the task force. But we are certainly open to and happy to talk to the council about steps towards restarting the task force and continuing that work via the task force, as well as through the agencies that have been participating and are coordinating together now.
Okay. That would be great. Thank you. Can you describe all financial support options that are available to formerly incarcerated individuals?
Is that a question around our kind of reentry services and how they're connecting folks?
Yeah.
So like we had mentioned before, folks are connected with benefits, entitlements, and so it's an individualized case process.
We are going to start with our public testimony. Thank you all so much for being here, and thank you for your time.
Okay.
I'm really sorry. Sorry. I do have one other question I forgot about, from Councilmember Lee who had to leave. It's a set of questions, actually, so forgive me. I do apologize. Under MACJ's Atlas Program, the Office of Neighborhood Safety works to support individuals released on their own recognizance that could benefit from additional voluntary neighborhood-based support. Can you please describe this program and explain how it supports individuals released on their own recognizance?
That basically describes the program, but we can get back to you with more specific information. The Office of Neighborhood Safety is not here today, and we would have to look to them to provide the details.
Does MACJ's Atlas Program work with older adults at all? And if so, how many older adults are participants?
So currently, Atlas is just young people, and they're in the process of expanding to adults. So that hasn't happened yet. They're standing it up right now.
Do you know the timing for that?
I don't. We'd have to get back to you.
Okay. And how much funding does the program provide?
Again, we will speak to the Office of Neighborhood and Safety and get back to you, but we don't have that information at the moment.
Okay. Is there a waitlist or higher demand than capacity for the program?
I think they're fully serving young people right now, and I know they don't have a waitlist for young people, and they're standing up the adult portion of the program now.
Does the program link individuals with more permanent supports, like housing, jobs, et cetera? What's the age range currently? Or is there like an age cutoff?
We believe it's, we'll have to make sure that we've got this right. So tentatively, we would say 18 to 25.
Okay.
We'll have to get back.
So does it link them with more permanent supports, like housing and jobs?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And are there individual peer mentors in this program who provide one-on-one support for the population served?
Yes.
Are there other similar programs to Atlas that provide wraparound support for individuals who were incarcerated for longer periods and are leaving jail?
Yeah, so that's really the services of our Community Justice Reentry Network.
Okay. And then the last one. Veteran Treatment Courts, aka VTCs, provide a method of support for justice-involved veterans by connecting them to appropriate services, like mental health and substance use disorder support in a court setting. Are you aware of any similar government programs that support justice-involved individuals, including older adults, in a court setting?
So there are a variety of treatment courts and specialty courts, so for substance use, ATI, kind of court parts as well. So I don't know if that's answering the question, but there are those other kind of specialty court parts for other populations, too.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry for the false alarm there. All right, we'll move on to public testimony.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we will be moving to public testimony. We will be hearing from folks who are in the room first, and then we will be moving to virtual panelists. As a reminder, if you are in chambers and you have not filled out an appearance card and you would like to testify, please do that now. And just a reminder that for those who want to submit written testimony, you can do so up to 72 hours after the hearing. The first panel that we're going to be going to, Frederick Robinson, Jose Vega, and Awilda Lopez. And please make your way. Frederick Robinson?
I have to roll that down. Okay, so thank you very much. I'm honored to be here. Let me give a little pedigree before I begin my comments. My name is Frederick Drew Robinson. I am 66 years old. I spent 20 years in the New York State prison system. Before I was arrested, I received a bachelor's degree from the University of Pennsylvania in political science. I completed my master's degree at Rutgers Estate University of New Jersey in the New Brunswick campus. I have to say, and I need some time to settle myself, that a lot of things that I have heard so far in this hearing frustrated me, bewildered me, and this is, of course, no slight to the esteemed ladies and gentlemen who testified before me, but I'm sure everyone in this room knows that there is a marked difference between theory and practice. And the military would say that sometimes the situation on the ground doesn't mirror the operational plan. During my time incarcerated, I, oh, and let me say this, too. I am a former member of the transitional housing units that you previously spoke of. My responsibilities were as case manager, and because of situations that I won't discuss here, I decided to retire in December of last year. In my retirement, I now consult with several groups. The Religious Society of Friends, which is commonly known as the Quakers, have established a prisons committee, which I am a member of. I am also a Quaker in my faith, so I am part of the Religious Society of Friends. And we will support and have supported persons who are coming home from prison. I also consult with the Legal Aid Society, who has just started a new unit of attorneys that are going to be going into facilities to do parole preparation and advocate for It's commonly said when you enter the prison system that the wisest prisoner prepares for their release the day they enter the system. I think it's really important to know that our part in it, with all of the support and whatnot that is available to us, it is incumbent upon us to have such a plan. You certainly have enough time to formulate one. And so I became part of what was called the Think Tank, that grew out of a group of gentlemen who actually were involved in the Attica riots. And since then, you have things now in the system like the IOC, where it stands for the Inmate Liaison Committee, so that prisoners' grievances and issues can be heard. But that being said, many times, we wanted answers to the very question, Chairman, that you asked, and we couldn't get them. And I find it conspicuous that the persons that should be answering your questions are not here. And so we established a yearly symposium, bringing all of the caretakers in this process, because it is a collaborative process. It's the city administrators, it's parole, the Department of Corrections, which at my time, when I entered this system, were two separate entities, but now it has merged, it's law enforcement, it's church groups. And we would bring all of these parties to the facility for a day-long symposium, including academics, professors from John Jay, professors from Columbia Law School, and we would have a discussion about these very issues, understanding that a lot of the expertise in the room were wearing green. I don't have the particular academic or professional training as some of the esteemed ladies and gentlemen who testified before me, but I gained my education about these issues from serving 20 years inside. Now, it's an education I wouldn't advocate anyone, anyone, get. But I tell you, my 20 years inside, I learned a lot more than you could ever learn in a classroom. That being said, I think that one of the things we always advocated was for greater coordination between outside groups and those of us who were incarcerated. It is really, well, I won't say too late, but you are up against the eight ball if you wait to connect with these services when you get out. The most successful programs I've seen is ones in which agencies came into the facility and began their training then, began their intake and assessment then, so that persons who are released know exactly where to go. Because when you step out of Port Authority, or Penn Station, or however it is, you arrive back to the city, you are in a state of flummox. You are, you experience anxiety. And if you don't have that support at that moment, then your odds decrease. We talked about 30, 60, 90. 30 days out, you're really at risk, 60 days, 90. And the longer that you stay confused or disconnected to supportive services, the greater the risk of your returning to prison. It is a direct correlation. I experienced it. I have only been home, I was released a year and a half ago, exactly 15 months, really, December 7th, I'm sorry, September 7th, in 2021. I walked out of Penn Station, and I had an anxiety attack. Everything after 20 years was different, moving faster than the speed of light. I liken it to returning to Earth after spending time on the surface of the moon. I had to sit down on the main branch of the post office steps just to gather myself. But I had a plan. I actually had it written down. I actually had formulated my plan, what we call a release plan. I submitted that to the board. I believe that it was very instrumental in the board deciding to let me go. The fact that I had a plan, and that included contact names, numbers, what have you, any training or whatnot I did in order to make myself more likely to remain at liberty. And so after I got myself together and my head stopped spinning, I pulled out my plan, and I started following it step by step. I've heard a lot of things, and I know I have limited time, I cannot really address them really in this space and time, but I will say this. There's a saying we always used to say, "If you fail to plan, you plan to fail." It's just that simple. And I do want to touch upon two things in particular, and I'm glad that my esteemed colleague here, I say that everybody who serves time in prison, whether you be male or female, it's like a sorority and a fraternity you wouldn't advise your friends to pledge to. So I'm sure that these persons who are sitting here with me can readily understand what I'm talking about. Particularly, in my own personal experience, I was lucky. Three weeks after I was released, I became employed by Exodus Transitional Community and enjoyed that term of employment, as I said, up to December 31st of last year. But with all of the things that I had to really confront, and there are so many obstacles, we don't have time to enumerate them all, the biggest one was housing. And I will tell you that a personal anecdote that just will highlight it exactly. When I was arrested, I was living in Harlem in a one-bedroom apartment, and I was paying $850 a month. Currently, that same apartment is $29.50. And one of my biggest fears when I was returning home was, how am I going to afford these rents? How am I going to afford to live? I started feeling like a tourist in my own hometown, because I can't afford to live here. And I'm sure many people, particularly of our age, who get out, if you don't have family support, say, "Oh, man, this is going to be hard. Where am I going to live?" And you have to have, and I will say this briefly, and I will end, you have to have permanent housing, because that is the basis of which you have a place, a base of operations, if you have permanent housing. You all know that the federal guideline, well, the federal definition, I believe, still is that anyone who does not have, who is not permanently domiciled is considered homeless. So if you're sleeping on your brother's couch, you're sleeping in your mom's couch, you're still homeless. And that is not conducive toward you being able to provide all of the other things that you need to do.
Absolutely.
So now you get frustrated. We all know what happens. You revert back to the very behaviors that caused you to go to prison in the first place. And so with that, particularly, and I will defer to this gentleman, because I think he's going to talk about it, this problem even increases for persons with disabilities. I know of a gentleman right now who made the board eight months ago, and he is still in Doc's custody because he cannot find ADA-approved housing. And for liability reasons, and I totally understand this, the department will not release you unless you have adequate ADA houses. Because if something happens to you, then they're liable. So you're stuck. You're stuck.
Thank you for your testimony. We do have to move on.
You're very welcome.
We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Jose Vega? Turn your microphone on, please.
All right. First, I would like to thank everyone present at this event, especially the New York City Councilmembers on reentry. This is a special memorial. This is a special memorial occasion for me. My name is Jose Vega. I am 51 years of age. I was formerly incarcerated. I was released from prison in June of 2018, after nearly 25 years of incarceration. I am a Level T3 paraplegic, which means that I am completely paralyzed from my chest down, with numerous medical issues. Being wheelchair-bound for nearly 25 years in prison was hell. I had to learn to litigate for a disabled wheelchair people to be afforded the rights and accommodations under the American With Disabilities Act. I thought that once I was released from prison, I would believe in that hell, pain and suffering behind me. I was wrong. After I was released, everywhere I saw housing assistance, I was turned down. There was no suitable housing available for formerly incarcerated people with disabilities like me. I was told over and over to go to a shelter, but shelters in New York City are not ADA-accessible for people with disabilities like me. But I did not leave prison hell to go to another hell. The public shelter system is a living nightmare for those walking. It is unimaginable for a person that is wheelchair-bound with disabilities like myself. My mom and dad opened the door to their one-bedroom senior citizen apartment. The apartment was not wheelchair-accessible. I could not enter the bathroom-toilet area or the kitchen, and perhaps worse, my mom and dad lived in constant fear and losing their apartment if the landlord discovered that I was living with them. They willingly gave up their tranquility and privacy for me. Couldn't ask for better parents. They took care of me for nearly 25 years of incarceration. I did not want to be a burden on them. So for four years, I kept reaching out to all reentry service providers I knew or heard of, filling out hundreds of housing applications. I never gave up, and when I was serving a life presence sentence with a disability or placed in solitary confinement, and deprived of my wheelchair and medical supplies as a form of punishment for fighting my rights, I wasn't going to give up now. But I am not here solely because of my resolve. I am here because Ms. Christina Green and Mr. Joseph Soto heard my story and decided to find a way to help. A simple act of kindness blossomed into a place that I could call home. I can maneuver around the entire apartment, bedroom, kitchen, bathroom, and the hallway, gym facility lounge, and patio area. For the first time, close to 30 years, I can say that I have a home, and it's all because of the Osborne Association, Ms. Green, Ms. Soto, and C.C. Management. Thanks for creating such a wonderful and beautiful community environment, and thanks for everyone involved to bring in a vision of market-scale housing development into reality, and for giving returning citizens who are wheelchair-bound, disabled, a safe place we could call home. As happy as I am today, my journey does not end until ADA-appropriate housing is available for all disabled, wheelchair-bound, returning citizens. Towards this goal, I am honored to be a part of Osborne and RAP to help in any way possible. They reached out to me and helped me when no other organization would. A special thanks and endless love to Mom, who has been my greatest inspiration throughout my life, especially the most difficult times of my life, and my dad, who was always my Miss my dad. He passed on the epidemic. My younger brother also, who's always been there for me. I also would like to thank my friend and mentor, Mr. Jose Soldano, who's here today, Director of RAP and his wife, for allowing me to sleep over the many times when I had nowhere to stay, because I couldn't get by the security guard at my mom's senior citizen apartment. I love you. Let's not forget Mr. Edward C. Funches, President of Inclusion Movement, who is also wheelchair-bound, for always being willing to extend a helping hand to a fellow traveler. Men and women who are elderly or disabled coming home from prison need to be assisted, helped and guided on finding work, housing, appropriate medical care, and basic daily needs on how to survive in the new way of life, after serving many years in prison, and for many like me, decades. To all those with disabilities who are suffering hardship, I endure, don't lose faith or give up hope. Remember, the worst day free is better than the best day in prison. I also enclosed a copy of my complaint that I filed when I was in prison, what we go through living with a disability, and the issues we go through coming home from prison. My counselor told me, "Jose, I won't be able to find you housing. It might take up to two years for me being released from prison after I was paroled." He told me, "Let's release you to your parents' house, and you deal with the issue when you come out. Because if not, it might take you another two years to be released, because we can't find you housing assistance for people with disabilities." And I'm not the only one going through it. Like you said, his friend, he'd been waiting eight months to get released, because they can't find him housing with people with disabilities. And this is an issue that people with disabilities are going through now, and we need help with that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing your testimony, and that's exactly why we're here today at this, you know, at this hearing, to make sure that we can hear from folks like you, and get ideas, and figure out how to make it better for everybody reentering into society, but particularly those who are most marginalized, most vulnerable, like people living with disabilities, such as yours. So thank you.
Thank you.
Willa Lopez?
It's a privilege being here with you all. My English is not too perfect, but I try, okay?
That's okay.
It's a privilege being here with you all, and you all to hear our story. I did 27 years and six months incarcerated. I was 29 years old. When I came home, I was 55. April 19, I came home next year. It's going to be a year now that I'm home, and being incarcerated and having childrens, well, being incarcerated, it was very hard for me. I even lost my family members. I lost my mother, three brothers from cancer. I'm a cancer survivor, too. And Osborne Association, they used to work with us, with the women, because in prison is not a lot of, not a lot of resources for women, you know? And we have to do, we have to do the best that we could do to get together, you know, and help each other, and help each other out. And if you don't have a family member, it's very hard, because the only thing you get paid is like, some jobs, 10 cents an hour, 15 cents an hour. So to get hygiene, and to get our stuff, it was very hard, especially, you know, with mental illness, and when you're sick, they don't really want to take care of you in the prison system. And I want to say, too, that when I went to prison, you know, I finished school when I was only in ninth grade, and my reading level was a 2.1 when I went to prison. Now, I haven't gone back to school, but I'm going to go back to school. I was a 7.9 in my reading, and it's just like, it's very painful, you know? They gave me a 15-year to life sentence, and I did 27 years with six months. I was very battered, you know? My kids, too. Well, they was abused, too, by my spouse, you know? And if I had the mentality that I have now, I wouldn't have gone to prison. And I want to thanks, you know, Exodus, they put me in one of the hotels when I came home. And before I came home, I was going to, in November, I received a letter from Christina Green, the Osborne Association, because I had turned, I was already 55. And April 19, I came home. On April 21, my case manager, Ms. Elizabeth Colon, she called and she said, "Ms. Lopez is home." So they sent my application. Now they send it through fax, and I signed the application, and they say, they're going to bump up my application. And I had my hearing on July, and I moved there in November this year, November 1st, to my own apartment.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. And, you know, and my kids, I left them, they were very small, and I have one son, he's incarcerated since 2010. He just was 21 years old, and he has like 20 years to 30. He's in PA Correctional Facility. And I was living, I was living in a double-life prison, prison, my son incarcerated, me incarcerated, because I couldn't, you know, be there for him. You know, we used to write each other, and now we could communicate, and we talk on the phone. You know, and my kids, they bring a lot to, we, they foster parents, that they had. So the system, you know, they take away your kids, and then they put them in other hands, and they be abused, in other words, in other ways, yeah. I just want to be, you know, pretty sure you could know what we went through in prison, what we go through in prison. It's no programs in prison. Everything is stripped away from us, you know? And it's like, they have the control over us. Even if we do everything good for them, they want to double you, punish you even more, you know? You're already paying one sentence, and then you have to pay a double sentence. And, you know, and I, I wanted the system to change, you know, to change more, because I just was 29 years old. I came home 55. I turned 56 April 28, and now I'm going to be 57. And I hope that you could be able to help us, you know? And now especially for the, for the youth now, it's getting lost. 15, 16, 17 years old, they're going to have to now do 25, 30, 40 years in prison.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for sharing. That's exactly, you know, again, why we have this hearing, and why we want to make sure that the services for reentry, that we're holding the agencies that are responsible for those services accountable, and that they can provide the best services possible, knowing that, you know, what happens in prison is out of our control, out of my control. But we want to make sure that what we can control, or help at least, you know, influence that, you know, can be made to the best that it can be. And by the way, your English is perfect.
Yeah? I get it better. Thank you. And it's a privilege, you know, come here, and I want to keep, I want to keep contributing to society.
Yeah.
Because all of the years, everything was taken away from me, you know? So I had my plan. When I come home, I want to contribute to society.
And we're lucky to have all of you, you know, as active contributors and, you know, to society. So thank you all again. I think Councilmember Wrestler, who we've been joined by, may have a couple of questions for you.
Thank you so much. Let me just firstly, thank you, Chair Hudson, for your leadership on this issue. It couldn't be more important, and really deeply appreciate you holding this hearing today and your leadership. Ms. Lopez, tu hablas inglés mucho mejor que mi español, pero...
Gracias.
You spoke beautifully, and so movingly. I wanted to ask about your experience in the Exodus Hotel. Where were you staying?
When I came home, they put me in 31st Street, the Wukar.
And what kind of services and supports did you get at that hotel?
Okay, they had a, they have a case managers, they have a, they had a doctor there, everything. They, I cannot, I cannot complain. I cannot complain. They treated me so beautiful, you know? They welcomed me home, after doing so many years. And then the case managers say, "Because I will go to the store, come back upstairs, stay inside." He said, "No, Ms. Lopez, you free." You know, "Just don't go to Puerto Rico." You know, and they really, really helped me a lot, a lot, because I have a, I have a lawyer for the legal society, for the domestic violence, yeah. My case is going through court because of that, yeah. And they really, really helped me so much, you know? They helped me, you know, with my mental health, they helped me with to get back on my feet, with my cosmetics, with clothing that I needed, you know? And they still, until today, I'm still with the program, yeah. And I want to thank it to Julio Medina, because he opened it, when he came home, he had the lot of years, you know? He was in prison, and he opened a little reentry, and he expanded. And, you know, I had met him the first time personally, and I want, you know, thank you, because he even opened it for women, too.
Right. I really appreciate you highlighting this experience. I was fortunate to have one of these reentry hotels in my district, and on a couple occasions, I just popped in to see how things were going, you know, uninvited, and I will tell you, the conversations that I had with the clients of Exodus, who were staying at the Tillery Hotel at the time, were just incredibly inspiring.
Yes.
And, you know, we have seen a major decline in the state prison population, but as many people are coming home, especially older adults, they have nowhere to go. And the shelter system is not equipped to meet their needs. And what we have seen in these reentry hotels is specialized services to support reentry, stable housing, connections to jobs. I was talking to individuals who were not only working full-time and doing great, doing great work with Black Power and other organizations, but were also doing advocacy work on behalf of formerly incarcerated individuals in their spare time. And while I was disappointed to see the Adams Administration change management from Exodus to Housing Works, because I think Exodus had been doing a very good job, I'm even more disappointed by the decline in the number of hotels that are operating. This was a new initiative that came about during the pandemic, and what was, I think, six or seven hotels is now down to half of that. And we do not have the capacity that we need, the beds that we need in these hotels, to provide specialized care to people exiting incarceration. And so I just want to say, I really appreciate you sharing your story, and highlighting how important it is for us to have specialized capacity to provide stable housing with services as people are exiting incarceration. And, you know, you're a great example of that. In just a year's time, you already have a beautiful new apartment, and are doing so well. So it's great to hear your story, and thank you for sharing, and thank you, Chair Hudson, for giving me the chance to speak.
I want to say one thing, too. The Osborne Association, Christina Green, the C and C Management, and the case managers that we have there, too, is a lot of support for us, too. It's not like we're just there in our apartment. They really give us a lot of support, and it's, you know, and it's something that everybody needs when they come, they come home from prison.
Absolutely. It's one of the things we're so fortunate in New York City, is the quality of the community-based organizations that provide reentry services, like Osborne, like Fortune, like Exodus, and Housing Works, and so many others. We have a phenomenal landscape of really good providers that can help, help people get through hard times. And I want to thank each and every one of the people who are involved in those organizations and their work.
And I want to, you know, like, in the Exodo, when I first got there, Ms. Elizabeth Colon, that's my case manager, Mr. Gary Brown, he's like a supervisor, everybody there, you know, just like, just like, pick me up, you know? Because let me tell you, I don't know how to use a cellphone, nothing. I came to a new world, a new world, 27 years, six months, me in prison. And I used to, they used to buy everything out for me. I said, "Please, writing piece of paper, have to take the train, do this." Sometimes I used to cry. I said, "God, please, help me. I have to go to my parole. I don't want to be late. I have to do my programs. I don't want to be late." It's like, very hard, you know? And still adjusting to society.
Right.
Yeah, and still adjusting to society. But it was very, very...
Can I say one more thing before I leave, please?
Sure.
These organizations need to get together and really help people coming home with disabilities, because it's difficult. Nothing's being done for it. None of these hotels were equipped to deal with people with disabilities like me. And this is something that focus needs to be come on, because there's a lot of people suffering. I just had a friend of mine, that he was forced to stay in a shelter, because he's disabled, and he lost both of his legs, because they had him sleeping on a bed that wasn't ADA-accessible to meet his needs. And that's something that we need to focus on with all these organizations, because Osborne reached out to me, and they made an apartment ADA-accessible for me, because Ms. Green, as the writer, heard my story. And a lot of these buildings is being built and stuff, and they're not being made, nothing, nobody's thinking about people with disabilities. And this is something that needs to be done, because there's a lot of people suffering with disabilities in these shelters. with disabilities in these shelters and especially the elderly.
Absolutely.
And something needs to be done. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you all again.
Could I just address gentleman's question?
Yeah, if you can quickly, because we have a whole lot of other folks who are lined up to speak as well.
Okay, I understand. I understand. Listen, um, part of the most important part, and I've heard this term used a lot in this room today, is case management. Now, the best case managers in the hotels, I worked at the Wyndham Gardens in Fresh Meadows, Queens, is one that everybody's situation is different. So you have to be a good listener, but the important thing is to assess right then and right there. We've had people come in the vans from Rikers Island and walk in our door, assess immediately what their needs are. And then the best case managers, if you don't have the answers or you don't particularly know where to go to get them, you start to do your research. So we put people in touch with, the most important thing, of course, for us is you got to get your vital documents. You come with no documents whatsoever. The New York State Prison ID is only good for like ninety days, not even ninety days, forty five days, something like that. So you've got to get a non-New York State driver's license or a new driver's license ID, uh, driver's license, you have to get your social security card. Many people don't have their birth certificate and you can't go through the process of navigating all the other bureaucratic stuff if you don't have this documentation. So the very first thing we do is make sure that everybody gets their vital documents. Then you can get plugged into whatever other services you may need.
Thank you. Thank you all again so much. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Gracias.
Thank you for hearing us on with story. And we will come back soon.
Before we get ready for our next panel, we're going to hear from Senator Hoileman on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Very good to see you. State Senator Brad Hoileman Siegel here. Just wanted to recognize my amazing colleague, Senator Julia Salazar, for all of her efforts in connection with the issue, um, that I'm testifying about regarding elder parole and the fact of our aging New Yorkers currently incarcerated and the need to, uh, to to take action in in connection with that. I just wanted to thank the Committee on Aging and the Committee on Criminal Justice and your resolution, which is so important. Resolution two four one calling upon us in the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign fair and timely parole and elder parole. Uh, I represent the Forty Seventh District in Manhattan, which runs from Christopher Street in the Village, six miles up to West One Hundred and Third, and I am the Senate sponsor of the Elder Parole Legislation S twenty four twenty three. Our elder parole bill, which I carry with Assembly Member Davila, would help remedy punitive long and ineffective sentences by guaranteeing a parole hearing, not parole, but a hearing for those aged fifty five and older who've served at least fifteen years. And you'll hear from Senator Salazar, if you haven't heard already, that her bill would provide a more meaningful parole review process for incarcerated people who are already parole eligible. We sponsor these bills because long prison sentences without sentences, without a meaningful chance for parole, don't keep anyone safe or deter crimes. They just keep people languishing in jail cells for decades after they've been rehabilitated. Now, there are roughly nine to ten thousand New Yorkers, uh, serving life sentences, surpassing states like Texas and Georgia. Thirty five hundred New Yorkers in state prisons have already served twenty years. Roughly one in four of those are now fifty years or older and the average age of death in New York State prisons is fifty eight years old. So as has been said by advocates since we began this campaign, while we don't have the death penalty here in New York, we have a new death sentence, which is death by incarceration. The need for elder parole is higher than ever. Over the last two decades, the number of incarcerated older New Yorkers has more than doubled to over ten thousand, even as the overall prison population has fallen by thirty percent. So you have the doubling of the older population while at the same time, um, the overall prison population has fallen precipitously. Uh, last year, the State Controller released a report that found that between two thousand eleven and two thousand eighteen alone, six hundred and seventy five older New Yorkers died in a New York prison. The Controller stated that, quote, policymakers should examine opportunities to reduce the population of incarcerated individuals fifty and over, where public safety would not be compromised, end quote. And that's exactly what we're trying to do here today. The solution lies in promoting hope, healing, and accountability to stop cycles of violence and support victims and survivors. The solution, we believe, lies in parole justice. Studies have shown that the odds of an older individual committing a crime after release from prison are incredibly low, five percent or lower, the lowest recidivism rate of any age cohort. Additionally, elder parole and fair and timely parole will save the state an estimated five hundred and twenty two million dollars a year. Let me say that again. It'll save the state five hundred and twenty two million dollars a year. And let's put this into perspective by uplifting what United Neighborhood Houses noted in their written testimony at our state legislative parole hearing at the end of, uh, last year. Five hundred and twenty two million dollars is greater than the entire budget of the New York City Department for the Aging, which, as we know, supports hundreds of thousands of older adults through contracted services such as over three hundred senior centers, home-delivered meals, and case management. Now, that's a staggering statistic and just think what we could do to serve older New Yorkers instead of keeping them locked up. But this is just also more about the state's bottom line. We have a crisis of death in our state prisons. Columbia University, uh, their Center for Justice published a study two years ago that found a seven hundred and seventy seven percent increase since the nineteen eighties in death behind bars of people who have served fifteen or more years, seven hundred and seventy seven percent increase. And that fifty six percent of those deaths behind bars in the last decades were among those age fifty five or older. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I urge the committee to pass this resolution again. Chair Hudson, thank you for your dedication, uh, to this issue today and wider on parole justice. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Senator.
Thank you. We're going to be moving on to our next in-person panel. And we can just go from right to left here, so if you'd like to start.
Hello, my bad.
Good morning, you can hear me? All right. Um, first of all, I want to thank you, council members. Um, my name is Rosalyn Smith. I'm the Beyond Incarceration Program Manager V-Day. I'm also a Brooklyn Community Leader at RAP, Release Aging People in Prison, and I'm on the advisory board of Osborne. As a person impacted by the criminal justice system, I must speak about my experience in the hope that others will not have to endure the hardships I encountered inside and when I was released. Many management companies discriminated against me when trying to obtain housing and jobs. I knew nothing about technology and felt alienated and frustrated with my progress. I served thirty nine years in prison and was released in twenty fifteen when I was fifty six years old. My co-defendant, Valerie Gator, who is sixty one, served forty one years and never got the chance at freedom because she was misdiagnosed and not properly treated for aggressive throat cancer that took her life. Our stories are not unique. These lengthy incarceration sentences and parole denials are being handed down each day and countless men and women are not provided with technology, educational, or medical care inside, nor the necessary tools and support for successful reentry. At fifty six, most people are preparing for their retirement. Here I was, preparing for the start of my life and career, being denied housing several times and being denied jobs. I suffer from an autoimmune disease that requires me to see multiple doctors to treat my lupus. I didn't even know that I needed to sign up for health insurance or that I had to pay. These things forced me to live with friends and family members when when I wanted and needed independence and direction in navigating my life. All of these things made me feel like a failure. I was depressed, I felt isolated and useless. I was computer illiterate and knew very little about technology. I didn't even know how to swipe a MetroCard, so imagine how difficult utilizing a cellphone, kiosk, laptop, or computer was. And when I was incarcerated, I worked for the DMV for five years as supervisor, but couldn't get a job with the DMV when I came home because they said prison work didn't count as experience. I longed for independence and what I thought was freedom. Still, I saw no way to achieve this due to all the denies for housing and jobs and the fact that I was an older individual without official documents of my work history other than prison jobs. Having official work documents and a comprehensive discharge plan addressing my employment, my mental health, my medical and housing needs would have made my experience more manageable and less frustrating. Reentry should begin once a person is in custody. It should be the goal to reintegrate older people into society with a plan for success, not obstacles to impede and discourage them. Our black and brown communities are being destroyed and decimated by mass incarceration. And we know that keeping people in prison is not the answer to public safety. The safest neighborhoods are the ones that have the resources to support their members. Through this understanding, women and men who have served long sentences address the harm they have caused and make a conscious decision to make a difference by designing curriculum and programs in prison, in the prisons that warehouse them and when returning home, creating healing spaces, five oh one C threes, businesses to enhance and educate their communities. They are making valuable contribution to the communities by developing, by the valuable contribution to their community's development and healing their needs. We need to bring people home sooner and not let people languish or die when they can be home with their loved ones in their communities, adding value and their expertise. The people closest to the problems are the one with the solutions, and this is exhibited in all the programs and businesses people impacted by the justice system have created over the years. The need for adjustment counselors for returning citizens is vital. We need to think about the emotional trauma we experience and invest in mental health support, funding community-based organizations that are led by formerly incarcerated people who help the majority of people with the reentry process. We need to be provided with resources that address our needs as we age and get supportive health while while incarcerated to address the issues that have brought us there in the first place. We need to have wraparound services from the start. We need safe housing, jobs that will pay us a living wage, therapeutic programs, physical and mental health, and trauma centers, and services to access and help us be successful. The prison staff should be trained to recognize these unique social, psychological, and emotional needs of the elderly and have educational, vocational, recreational, and rehabilitation programs to accommodate them with physical designs appropriate to for their health needs and limited physical capacity. We need to bring our elders home. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
My name is Samuel Hamilton and I'm a senior reentry advocate at Brooklyn Defender Services. I'm also justice impacted, having served thirty two years incarcerated on an eighteenth life year sentence and also having appeared before ten parole boards before eventually being released. And that kind of speaks to the two bills that Senator Salazar spoke to. Thank you to the Committee on Aging and Criminal Justice for the opportunity to speak today about reentry issues for older New Yorkers. BDS reentry team works with clients and their families from the beginning of their case until they come home. We call this process reentry to preentry. This means that before a person is incarcerated, our team is available to provide preentry support, advice, and mentoring. During incarceration, we work to secure access to essential medical, mental health, safety, education needs through individual administration advocacy. We mentor people in custody on accessing services and educational opportunities in preparation for their release. We monitor and document conditions incarcerated New Yorkers experience and advocate for their rights and well-being. After release from incarceration or completion of an alternative to release program known as ATI, we help people find housing, gain full employment, continued education, and community-based support. In light of the work our reentry team does, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the fact that our work is made possible due to the funding from city council. So thank you. When people come home from city jails or upstate prison, regardless of age, and more so, older New Yorkers, they need help to access basic essentials such as housing, photo ID, healthcare, transportation, and employment services. In our written testimony, we have a number of suggestions for improving the reentry process for older returning citizens. However, for time's sake, I will be focusing on one program that we know all too well works, that is housing. Starting during the height of the pandemic, the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, Mark J., worked with community organizations to open several hotels to provide safe, private rooms for people returning from New York City from jails and prisons. In the first two years of operation, over two thousand New Yorkers benefited from this program. One of those who benefit, then aged fifty nine, was released from a New York State prison after serving forty years to an already overcrowded DHS shelter at the height of the pandemic, reached out for reentry assistance from Brooklyn Defender Services. In this case, we were able to mediate a positive outcome and he received a bedroom at one of the reentry hotels, which provided a safe and supportive space for him to adjust and navigate the other challenges he faced with his return. At the end of twenty twenty two, that hotel was closed due and its residents were moved to other locations. However, with the wraparound services that occurred in the reentry hotel and our support, the aforementioned moved into his own one-bedroom apartment where he remains to this day as a law-abiding citizen and, if I may add, gainfully employed and reintegrating into society at large. Recently, several of the hotels have been closed and the total occupancy has been cut almost in half. And on June thirtieth, this program is scheduled to close due to a lack of funding, even though today there are over five hundred people in the hotels and an additional four hundred people on their waiting list looking for a safe space as well as Kate, as well, as was the case with our client. In the case of a fifty six-year-old elder scheduled to be released in May, his, his name has been added to that waiting list, a list that has paused since late last year when two of the reentry hotels was closed by the Mayor's Office. And and in closing, we at BDS realize that countless aging men and women who have multiple complex issues are being released from jails and prison every day with limited resources to support their basic human needs. Therefore, on behalf of BDS, I urge the city council to work with the Mayor's Office to ensure continued funding for the reentry hotels as well as support the recommendations men- mentioned in our written testimony. Thank you again for your support that allowed us to do such amazing and important work, but also. but also for your time.
Thank you for yours. Can I just ask a quick question? I just want to confirm, the programs that you said are set to close on the thirtieth, on June thirtieth, that's the reentry hotel?
That's the Mark J., the hotels that they have open. It's our understanding that that contract ends on June thirtieth. So there's several other hotels that are operating? Whether the Mayor's Office is going to fund that, we haven't heard anything to that. And it's our hope that city council could pretty much urge him to keep those hotels open because of the invaluable services that it provides for people being, returning back to society.
Thank you. We urge him to do a lot of things that he doesn't do, but we will for sure continue to urge him on that front.
Thank you.
But thank you.
My name is Paris Stewart. I did twenty years. I was released twenty eighteen. I've been home about five and a half years. I'm gonna spare you the prison stories and all that, because they did a great job on that. My issue out here since I've been here is this. You have to deal with, I went to jail thirty-three, came out. I'm fifty-eight, fifty-eight years old, I think. Fifty-eight, fifty-nine, one of them. But I know that since I've been out in the streets, it's not New York City. I'm not from New York. I moved, came here from a different city. But it's not the city, it's the systems overlapping each other and neither give a damn about other. Let me give you an example. When I first came home, parole said, "I want you to take these mandated programs." Well, that's time-consuming. You want me to do this for three years, go to a program for three years from three o'clock to whatever clock, and then I have to find a job? Follow me? And then I gotta be in a shelter at nine o'clock? And you want me to be successful? But then when I ask one system, "Can you give me a break? Because this seem to be a priority," this system says, "No." Okay, then the middle system, which is the shelter, I ain't gonna even go into that matters. That's a whole insanity discussion on its own. So I had to juggle all of that for four years. Okay? Now, at the end, here's my issue, because I already know the system is broke and they work against you. And it's really not, there's not as written, it's the people also who are responsible, from parole officers to case managers who go and eat donuts and play on their phone, and DHS is holling at them, "Where this guy at?" I want to move into a housing, but because you on your phone playing games and eating donuts and don't care, I could sit in the shelter two extra years because you disregard what DHS sent you on the computer. That's part of the problem too. Follow me? So anyway, I ended up doing four years in a shelter, which was another sentencing. They told you. And how, and I worked every day. Parole wouldn't give me a break. You ain't getting no break. You know, I'm just saying, shelter is madness, but I always went to work and always, they gave me a voucher, the voucher that was obsolete, a twelve-hundred-dollar voucher in New York City. You can't even get a closet. So I stayed in the shelter another fifteen months until somebody, I don't know who, said, "Great idea, give them nineteen-hundred-dollar voucher." Da, 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 to, to, to. I went out with that for a whole eighteen months. I never got a studio with that nineteen-hundred voucher because the new game is either you black, I ain't gonna give you apartment, I'm talking about New York City, either you're too old and don't have the right income, you ain't getting up in here, and you're a convict or got criminal history, so that's a triple threat. So the odds is, you understand what I'm saying? The system, you understand? But I mean, I know how to survive, but I don't want to use survival tools that bring me back to the game. So what do you want me to do? So by, you know, the man upstairs and some legislators, I don't know how it came in my head, they called me back from work from the shelter and said, "Listen, man, you eligible for housing." And lo and behold, it was the odds were society, and they got the staff downstairs and do the thing. I interacted with them, and I lived decent, and my mind is at peace. And I'm, only thing I'm lacking is a couple dollars now. Other than that, I'm good. But what I'm saying is, if the hat wouldn't have fell from heaven on my head, I'd be in the shelter right now. I'm done.
And how old were you when you were released?
I was, I'll tell you, I forget the time. I'm fifty-eight right now, but I'm now five years.
You said five years?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so about fifty-three, fifty-four. Okay.
But I get it.
But over fifty is what I was trying to gather.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I came out over fifty. But I'm just saying, cut through the chase. It's not New York City. When you take an older person, when we come home, parole, DHS, and what was the other system? Parole, DHS, and trying to find a job?
Right. Nobody sucking to each other? And then we're giving you different bandages?
They ain't giving them no mercy.
Yeah.
I'm done.
Understood. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I need to go out. That's why I spoke.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Chair Hudson and council members, thank you for this opportunity to testify before this council. And Chair Hudson, thank you for supporting our pro reform bills, Elder Pro and Fair and Timely Pro Bill. Greatly appreciated. I want to speak about a couple of things. You know, we hear about older people. I want to put a human face on these older people. We're talking about people who I spent a lot of time with. I was released from prison five years ago after thirty-eight years. I was sixty-six years old when I came out. Went in at twenty-seven. So one of these older folks is people who taught me. I wouldn't be here today. I wouldn't be the director of the Police Aging People in Prison Campaign. I wouldn't be involved in my community as a social and moral obligation if I wasn't mentored by great men. Roz mentioned her co-defendant, Valerie Gator, an iconic woman at the Bethel Hills Correctional Facility. Just about every woman I run into, I credit her, Valerie Gator, with being instrumental in them being who they are today. And the question is, why would we allow such great people, great human beings, to languish in prison needlessly? They obviously do not pose a threat to public safety. In fact, they enhance public safety. They have enhanced community safety in prisons across the state. One of my first mentors died at seventy-two years old after forty-six years in prison, fourteen parole denials. And he's also responsible for literally hundreds if not thousands of men across New York State prison system transforming their lives. Why would we allow such men to die in our prison system? Or to release them at an age where they can continue the job that they've been doing for decades across our prison system? And I want to mention that these older men we're talking about, that term "credible messenger", that was developed in our prison system by these older men. Violence interrupters developed in our prison system by these older men. In fact, transitional service, which is in just about every prison in our state, that concept that men and women need to be transitioned back into our society, into the community, that whole concept, the details, the outline of it, was developed by incarcerated men. In fact, one of them is still languishing in prison, seventy-five years old, close to forty years in prison. Why do we allow such great men and women and non-binary folks to languish in our prison system when they could be safely released and be a contributing factor in our communities? We don't need college students to be credible messengers. Onucci was correct, and perhaps the only correct thing he probably ever said, in my opinion. He said, "The best credible messengers are the old timers in our prison system." We don't need a college student. They can't reach these kids. We tried everything else. We need these men and women and non-binary people that are languishing in our prison and doing the job that nobody else can do. Nobody else. Developing the program because I was a part of this. I was mentored by them, and then I became a mentor. New York State prison does not offer a single program to help us not only take responsibility for the harm, but to get insight into the harm, to really do that. And to, once you get that insight, then you embrace that moral obligation of repairing harm. These men, women, and non-binary folks are the ones who taught us, who gave us the guidance on this path that we are still in and we are still committed because it's a lifetime commitment for us. Why are we letting them languish in prison without any hope for the most part? This is why the two bills that we advocate for is the only solution. You can't retrofit these prisons. You can increase medical care. It's always going to be standard, and for elderly person, it's a crisis. Every year, every decade is a crisis. A mental health and a physical health crisis for the elderly. Why are we doing this to them? It's inhumane, and we are better than that. So the only solution for this is to pass these bills so that men and women could be reunited with their families, go on with their lives, and continue to be asset to our society. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much to this panel. Thank you. We will be moving on to our next panel. We'll be hearing from Tanya Krupat, Brianna Payden-Williams, Rebecca Almanzar, Christian Gonzalez Rivera. We can hear from Christian first and then just go down the line.
Hi, my name is Christian Gonzalez Rivera, and I'm the Director of Strategic Policy Initiatives at the Brookdale Center for Healthy Aging at Hunter College, where a research and policy center focused on aging. So thank you, Chair Hudson, for calling this hearing and introducing Resolution 241. In it, you highlight facts that show that elder justice means changing the unfair way that the parole process handles the cases of older people who have spent much of their lives in prison. You point out that taxpayers are spending money on perpetuating human suffering with no result in terms of public safety. And you detail how a systemically unjust system perpetuates systemic racism. Prison is no place of growth. The poor nutrition and medical care offered in prison, as you've heard, you know, from the panels, combined with the physical and emotional stress of prison life, resulted incarcerated people exhibiting sickness and disability much earlier than people outside. So this means that people in prison in their fifties exhibit some of the same conditions that people in their seventies and eighties exhibit outside. The average death of, the average age of death of people in the New York State prison system is just fifty-eight years. To put that in context, if New York State prison system were its own country, that life expectancy of fifty-eight would rank it near the bottom of all countries in the world. In contrast, New Yorkers outside who live in community, their average life expectancy is eighty-one. So this is a huge concern, not only for the people who are currently aging in prison, but also for society more broadly. And the main reason why is because keeping people inside after they've already solved those long sentences closes that window of opportunity that they have to rebuild their lives. And that's the biggest, that's the central argument here. I mean, it's, you know, the longer you keep them inside, the faster that window of opportunity closes. As you know, it's already difficult for people who are already older to go out and get a job, get housing on fixed incomes, all of those things. But it's that much harder, as you've already heard, for people who are older and also just coming out of prison. And that is a job that could be made a lot easier if we make a concerted effort to serve them in community through the huge social services network that we have in this city. And we have that huge infrastructure for that. People end up in prison largely because society failed to take care of them, particularly when they're young. Case in point, one cross-sectional study found that seventy percent of Black high school dropouts ended up in prison at some point before they turned thirty. Seventy percent, right? So failing to give older incarcerated people a real chance to demonstrate their rehabilitation is just adding more insult to a life that society has already failed in every possible way. So let's change what we're doing. Let's change what we're spending our money. Let's decide to strengthen community supports to embrace people who are returning from prison. Because a community service system that can include, that has the strength to include people who are returning from prison is a system that is strong enough to serve everyone. So just like that old metaphor about the curb cuts. I mean, it's like the curb cuts are there to help you if you're in a wheelchair, to get up and down from the curb. But they'll also help you if you have a hand truck and you're delivering something. I mean, it's like they'll help you if you're pushing a stroller. That same idea, I mean, it's like a system that is strong enough to serve the many, many needs of people returning from prison is a system that will serve everyone. And that's something that is a central issue about why this issue is not just about the people who are in prison, but it's about everyone. And if you can serve those people, you can serve everyone. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Rebecca Almanzar, and I'm a forensic social work supervisor at the Legal Aid Society. Thank you to the chairs for giving me this opportunity to comment on this very important issue. Getting our aging New Yorkers through the parole board sooner with a presumption of release allows for more successful integration. According to doc statistics, only six-point-six percent of individuals released on parole between the ages of fifty and sixty-four are returned for new commitments based on a new conviction, which is all the more reason the presumption should be released, especially for elders who may be starting to show signs of more complex needs while incarcerated. Releasing them at a time when they still have capacity to engage and meaningfully contribute to their care is crucial to long-term stability in the community. Antonio's story highlights what can go terribly wrong when the release comes too late. Antonio is a seventy-seven-year-old man who had been incarcerated for forty-two years at the time of his release from prison in 2011. He was eligible to see the parole board starting in 1990, after serving nineteen years of his sentence. Antonio was incarcerated for another twenty-two years because of repeated parole denials. When he was finally released in 2011, Antonio was sent to live at a shelter in the Bronx with no identifying documents. A shelter case manager quickly recognized that Antonio had serious memory issues, was struggling to take care of his daily needs and other signs of what looked like dementia. This incredible case manager worked tirelessly and far outside of her role to care for Antonio in an environment that was not suited for his needs, as well as ensure that he stayed in compliance with his parole mandates. What ensued after being dumped in the shelter system because New York State docs no longer wanted to pay for his increasingly expensive dementia care in custody was a technical parole violation after his shelter closed and he was transferred to a new unfamiliar shelter without his case manager. After spending months at Rikers terrified and not understanding what was happening, every nursing home rejecting him because of his criminal record and being unable to receive a formal diagnosis for dementia by Correctional Health Services, the administrative law judge in the parole violation case, a former parole board commissioner herself, sent Antonio back to prison during a tearful final hearing at Rikers Island when he asked to go home. She stated that she felt she had no other option and that because of his severe limitations in caring for himself and lack of acceptance to a nursing facility, he would be safer in prison than on the streets of New York, knowing also that parole would not adapt to his parole mandates to his limitations. Antonio's story shows how the Elder Parole Bill and Fair and Timely Bill are both critically important. Because Antonio was under fifty-five when he first went before the board, he does not fall within the Elder Parole Bill. But despite his interview date being scheduled for when he was forty-four years old, Antonio was denied for twenty-two years beyond that eligibility date and was sixty-five when released. The earlier eligibility for parole that the Elder Parole Bill would accomplish must be accompanied by the presumption of older adults who pose no risk to public safety being fit for release, so they don't suffer a series of denials that keep them incarcerated indefinitely. His ability to provide information, connect with medical care for proper evaluations and treatment planning, and reconnect with family or friends who could have provided support as his dementia progressed might not have been lost, but it was lost. His release came so late that the only place, the only memory he had was that of prison. Supporting Resolution 241 is one step, but there's more immediate steps that can be taken. For example, advocating for organizational funding fairness to ensure that we have attorneys, social workers... social workers, paralegals, and support staff at public defenders offices to support our elders going before the parole board and their reintegration and connection to community care upon release is one element. Additionally, you can continue to support emergency reentry housing options for people upon release from prison to increase the likelihood of a successful and humane reintegrating process. The MOCJ Rancho hotels have been a critical resource for LAS clients who otherwise would not have housing. Also, increasing access to the housing and residential medical resources already in existence for older New Yorkers can change the landscape of reentering as an aging individual. For example, in order to be housed at Valley Lodge, a transitional residence run for seniors run by the West Side Federation for Senior and Supportive Housing, requires an intake and stay at a Department of Homeless Services shelter. Any amount of time in an intake shelter can be challenging. Those difficulties can be dangerous and intolerable for an aging person just returning to New York City after decades removed. Allowing seniors to go directly to Valley Lodge and bypassing an intake shelter would greatly increase their stability and safety in returning to their community. Relatedly, requiring nursing home and assisted living facilities to accept people into their care with criminal convictions can transform the lives of elders reentering New York City who require a high level of medical care and need support in attending to their daily needs when they no longer have any living relatives to care for them. While working with infirm seniors at Rikers Island held on parole violations, I witnessed the passive discrimination that nursing homes would engage in when the referral came through to them that had Correctional Health Services letterhead on top. They consistently denied seniors for their vacancies and left very ill New Yorkers lingering at Rikers without an appropriate place to go. Holding nursing homes and assisted living facilities accountable to admitting older folks based on their medical need regardless of criminal conviction is an immediate move that could open appropriate living environments for reentering seniors. As a social worker at the Legal Aid Society, I've supported and will continue to support older people coming home from decades incarcerated. There are incredible resources available in New York City that can provide the services for our fellow New Yorkers that they need coming home back to our communities. I'm asking to have more of those resources, increased access to those resources, and the ability to get aging New Yorkers connected to them sooner so they don't miss out on the second chance they have worked towards and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, good afternoon, good midday. Thank you for holding this hearing today and to address this urgent issue. Thank you for inviting the agencies who didn't come. We appreciate your inviting them, even if they unfortunately weren't here. My name is Tanya Krupat. I'm the Vice President of Policy and Advocacy at the Osborne Association. For 90 years, Osborne has been transforming lives, communities, and the criminal legal system with a particular focus on the intersection of aging and incarceration for the past decade. As a city and a society, we are denying the humanity of older people in jails and prisons and those returning to our communities at an enormous human and fiscal cost. Speakers before me have courageously shared their experiences and demonstrated why we need to bring more people home and bring them home sooner. In order to ensure people have a pathway out of prison before decades pass and more damage is done, we ask you to vote for the resolution you're sponsoring, calling on the state legislature to pass the Elder Parole and Fair and Timely Parole Bills. These bills promote healing and safety and have the support of many crime victims and survivors. We unequivocally believe in the urgency of these bills. Rather than keeping us safe, incarceration perpetuates harm. It is also incredibly expensive with little or a negative return on investment. I want to highlight some of the actual financial costs and make a case for decarcerating and reinvesting in older people in families and in communities. Today, close to 1 in 4 people in New York State prisons is over 50. As of this week, 802 older people are incarcerated on Rikers Island. The New York City Comptroller calculated that 1 year on Rikers for 1 person costs $556,539, an astounding and deeply concerning figure considering what people and all of us are getting for this amount of money. With this figure, we are currently spending more than $446 million to keep older people on Rikers. This is close to New York City's aging entire budget, and this does not include what we are spending to keep New York City residents incarcerated in prisons for 30 or 40-years, decades past their minimum sentence. Older people are 2 to 5 times more expensive to incarcerate, and in many cases, they are churning home with trauma, health, and adjustment issues that are entirely preventable. To add to this, thousands of people are discharged from prison directly to New York City homeless shelters, which can cost up to $9,000 per month per person. Shelters also include rules like being locked out all day, which can increase the likelihood of rearrest generally or parole violations. We could double New York City aging's budget by releasing older people. Simply bringing 2 people off Rikers who are there for 1 year could fund an entire specialized unit with the New York City aging at $1 million to focus on justice-impacted older adults. We recommend creating such a unit as well investing in community-based programs, accessible housing, peer support models, and more. My written testimony expands on these recommendations. And I just wanted to make quick note that I was very disappointed to hear that the Care Task Force came to a natural close. We were part of the steering committee of that, and that was news to me. It didn't feel like a natural close. So, we recommend continuing a citywide interagency task force. We also need to look at the full scope of ways incarceration affects older New Yorkers. And I was happy to hear you ask questions about caregivers earlier, and I learned from your own email, Chair Hudson, that it's National Caregivers' Day today. So, thank you for your emails. Older New Yorkers care for and are welcoming loved ones home from incarceration without additional resources to do so. This includes grandparents and others caring for children whose parents are incarcerated. At Osborne, we have developed effective responses such as our kinship reentry program and our New York Initiative for Children of Incarcerated Parents. These and models like them need greater investment to meet the need. We look forward to working with the Committees on Aging and Criminal Justice on next steps and urge you to ensure, as you did today, that those who are formerly incarcerated and living elder reentry every day are included in guiding this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was also news to me about the Care Task Force, so. I wanted to ask you a quick question. How many people are you serving that are coming from docs? And do you know the total number of people coming to New York City from the state prison system by chance?
We would love to know that, and I think it's something, as you asked previously, that the city should be tracking. We don't know, and we used to be able to get more information from docs. In the past few years, we haven't. We would have to foil for that information. We could get back to you with a rough estimate based on county of conviction and doing some tallying.
Okay.
And I can also get you the number that we're serving across all of our programs, but I don't have it today.
Okay, no problem. That would be helpful just that we can compare to what they give us. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Brianna Payden-Williams, the Communications and Policy Associate at Levon New York, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Levon New York's members include more than 110 nonprofit organizations that provide core services which allow all New Yorkers to thrive in our community as we all age. As we've heard today in New York, the number of people in prisons have been declining. However, the proportion of older adults in prisons continue to rise, as we've heard with 1 in every 4 incarcerated people in prison 50 or older. And it's evident that people in prison age at an accelerated rate because of harmful and unhealthy prison conditions, including stress, separation from loved ones, poor nutrition, as well as other factors. And unfortunately, when formerly incarcerated older adults are released from prison and reenter into the community, they're often faced with unique challenges with being released in their later life. And here in New York City, there's really, and there has, New York has, excuse me, a moral and fiscal crisis of aging and dying in prison due to decades of extremely harsh sentencing and a racially biased parole system that does not have adequately created space for redemption, personal transformation, healing, and safety. And so it's time for the city to address elder parole as an aging issue with an older adult population reentering into community and really just looking to move forward in their lives. And so we're here, in addition to supporting your resolution, have the following recommendations. We encourage the city to look to broaden and fund collaboration with community organizations, including the Osborne Association, that really have the expertise and programming to provide resources and tools to individuals, families, and communities impacted by the criminal justice system. We also encourage the city to remove barriers to access affordable housing for formerly incarcerated older adults. And we know here in New York City, the housing crisis in the city is really acute for older adults, as many relied on fixed income and have difficulty with affording the rent with increased rent prices. Particularly for former, for older adults that are released from prison, finding affordable and accessible housing is really an added challenge with many landlords, as we've heard today, discriminating against older adults. And we also ask the city to work with HPD to make older adult housing a key priority. And as you know, there's a waiting list of over 200,000 older adults, including older adults released from prison. And so we ask the city and recommend that the city really increase the capacity of older adult housing that would relieve, excuse me, one of the largest hurdles for older adults returning into the community after incarceration. We also encourage the city to create space through support for community building and cure violence programs for formerly incarcerated older adults to contribute to their communities. We know upon release, formerly incarcerated older adults often make important contributions to their communities, and that includes interrupting gun violence, mentoring younger people, excuse me, and really ultimately just promoting community safety. And in addition to that, we also encourage the city to expand mental health and social services for older adults as well. With that being said, we also strongly support your resolution 241A, which calls for the passage of the Fair and Timely Parole Act as well as the Elder Parole Act. And we just show our appreciation for Councilmember Hudson for introducing this resolution, and even though Chair Rivera isn't here today, just her support as well for holding this hearing, as well as the additional council members for their support. And it's really time that the city reformed its parole system to provide hope for families across the state by passing the Elder Parole Act. And if passed, this bill would make it eligible for individualized parole consideration for people in prison age 55 and older who have served at least 15-years. And we know it is not a blanket release policy, but rather it gives older people who have transformed themselves an opportunity to demonstrate their moral character before the Board of Parole. And secondly, we really encourage the city to support the passage of the Fair and Timely Parole Act to ensure that individuals have a fair and meaningful opportunity to demonstrate their rehabilitation and to be released. And this bill would really provide more meaningful parole reviews for incarcerated people who are already parole-eligible by altering the standard of parole to center release determinations not on the original crime, but on the person's rehabilitation while incarcerated and their current risk of violating the law. And more information can be found in our written testimony, but thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you so much to this panel. We appreciate it. We're moving on to our last in-person panel. We're going to have Ariel Bash, Tara Klein, and I apologize if I mispronounced this name, Raji Adaya Thumangalam.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to testify today, Councilmember Hudson and the council. My name is Tara Klein. I'm the Deputy Director of Policy and Advocacy for United Neighborhood Houses. UNH is a policy and social change organization that represents 46 neighborhood settlement houses in New York State, including 40 in New York City. We're really honored to be here today to testify in support of your resolution, Councilmember Hudson, calling on the state to pass the parole justice package of legislation. So, UNH and our settlement house members strongly support both of these parole justice bills, which serve as compassionate measures that would support some of New York's most vulnerable residents. The bills would give incarcerated people the opportunity to receive a fair parole hearing and potentially return home to their communities, where UNH's settlement house members offer supportive programs and services that foster community connection. Everyone has worth and dignity, and no one should be defined by the worst thing that they have ever done. These bills would give people the opportunity to return home and build stronger communities. We know that New York spends an average of $60,000 each year to incarcerate just 1 person. That number jumps up to between $100,000 and $240,000 annually per older adult in prison. We heard numbers about New York City jails from the comptroller earlier. They're astronomical numbers. We know that this money could be reinvested in community-based services that provide resources and strengthen overall community health and safety. We heard earlier that these bills together would save the state about $522 million per year, which of course is greater than the entire budget of New York City aging. So, on the Elder Parole Bill, we've heard that the share of older adults in state prisons is rising steeply even as the overall prison population has been decreasing. And, older people in New York prisons comprise 56% of all deaths behind bars. In the 1980s, this was at just 8%. So this is really a growing challenge. Older adults in prison face unique challenges that can be met by shifting them back into their communities. They face a low public safety risk. Older adults have been shown to have the lowest recidivism rates of any age cohort in the country. They face lower medical costs on the outside. Older adults in prison have very high medical needs, which add high cost to prison healthcare delivery, which is fully provided by the state via docs. This could be shifted onto insurance companies and Medicaid and save the state a lot of money. And they live longer lives on the outside. Older adults in prison tend to experience accelerated aging due to the struggles of prison life and the poor conditions. We also know that the prison healthcare system has faced a lot of criticism for the low quality of care, especially throughout the pandemic. And so we really need people to get out and access those services on the outside. So this bill is really common sense. On the Fair and Timely Parole Bill, we heard earlier from Senator Salazar and her comments that often parole commissioners are looking at the underlying case only, and freedom tends to be based on events that may have happened decades in the past and on facts that can never change. By failing to consider what a person has accomplished while in prison and how they may have changed, this practice fails to adhere to the guiding principle of maintaining public safety. This leads to a lack of meaningful opportunities for parole release and is a major contributing factor to mass incarceration in New York State. We also know that racism, white supremacy, and other systems of oppression permeate the parole process. Black people are disproportionately impacted. Not only are they more likely to be incarcerated, we know that they're less likely to be granted parole release than their white counterparts. This bill, again, both of these bills together are urgently, urgently needed. So, formerly incarcerated individuals often need high levels of institutional support in order to succeed after they leave prison, especially for older adults who have been incarcerated for long periods of time and may lack familial support on the outside. Though these cases are not tracked and they are not contracted to do so, settlement houses are already serving previously incarcerated individuals with some of these supportive programs and services and helping with reintroduction to the community and ensuring that people feel connected. Settlement houses believe that a community thrives when all residents are lifted up and supported, and that individuals who are incarcerated deserve a fair chance to return home to their communities. And that's why we strongly support the Resolution 241A in support of these bills. And I just want to say, at the same time, if this legislation does move forward, we hope that the city and state will invest more resources into these community-based programs and providers who are already facing a severe budget crunch, as you know. So we hope that can move forward as well and be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. I'm Ariel Bash. I'm the Senior Director of Health Services at JASSA. We're one of the largest providers of aging services in New York City. JASSA serves over 40,000 older adults with affordable housing, home care, and other essential services primarily contracted through New York City. We're values-driven, honoring older New Yorkers as vital members of society and providing services that support aging with purpose. As such, I want to speak both about why city councils should pass a resolution calling on the state to pass the 2 parole bills under discussion, and how aging services like JASSA can provide supports to returning elders in a way that enables them to strengthen the communities they left behind. First, the bills. Prisons have few accommodations to meet the needs of the aging and can cause accelerated aging, as many people have touched on. The result is that people die behind bars, notwithstanding the amazing strides they've made. The parole bills do not automatically set people free, as we know. Rather, they provide opportunity for people to demonstrate their rehabilitation and readiness to return to the community. Research shows that paroled older adults are unlikely to return to prison for new crimes. Passing these bills is certainly an issue of justice, but also, the cost of incarcerating older adults completely outstrips the cost of care in the community. While New York does not document the cost of incarcerating older people in its state prisons, data from other states indicate the annual cost for incarceration are up to 4x higher for those over 55, costing up to $240,000 per year compared to $60,000 for younger people. Passing these parole bills would free up needed funding for all community-dwelling older adults. I'd like to share 2 of JASSA's Klein stories to understand why this is important. Ms. C. is a born-and-bred New Yorker who was incarcerated for 14-years, where she developed multiple health conditions. After her After release, she joined JASSA's Chronic Pain Self-Management Program, an evidence-based health education program, where she learned about tools to manage her pain. After completing the program, Ms. C. volunteered to be trained as a leader to deliver the program to her peers so that they too can manage their health conditions. Mr. R. is 70 years old and was released after 48 and 1/2 years of incarceration. Mr. R. has a history of falls, hypertension, tuberculosis, and degenerative disc disease. He uses a wheelchair. He was hospitalized and set to be discharged to a shelter, which would have been dangerous given his health and social risks. JASSA advocated for his discharge to be delayed to provide time to find a safe living alternative. We identified a niece who agreed to have him discharged to her home under the Osborn Kinship Program, as we seek more permanent housing for him. JASSA also provided Mr. R. with education on medication adherence, healthy eating, and falls prevention, and helped Mr. R. to enroll in Medicare, get a physician house call and ultrasound at home, connect to medically tailored meals, home care, and a blood pressure monitor. Community services are far better equipped to support clients like Ms. C. and Mr. R. Let's work together to end a system that's unjust to older people and focus on moving additional resources to support them in the community. Older adults who return home can meaningfully contribute to New York City. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Raji Adiyathumangalam. I'm a forensic social worker at New York County Defender Services. Thank you to New York City Committee on Aging and Committee on Criminal Justice, and in particular Chair Hudson for holding this hearing today and for this opportunity to present testimony today on the crucial reentry issues for older New Yorkers. Today, I testify, as have others, to how deeply broken the parole systems are, as well as the inadequate reentry for our justice-involved elders, and what their vital and urgent needs are, even more so after COVID has wiped out a staggering number of older adults who have always served as a living witness to a nation's history and to our sense of continuity day by day as human beings. If we're truly invested in improving community safety, it comes with the moral imperative to do the right thing by reuniting families and reallocating crucial resources toward urgent community needs and goals. I strongly support city council and urge city council to pass Resolution 241. My testimony comes from a place of extensive experience and advocacy in the areas of older adults and reentry issues that are specific to them. First, I worked with older adults at a senior center funded by DIFTA in Anitza Housing Development in Brownsville in Brooklyn. The community was made of almost entirely African-American, Afro-Caribbean, and Latin Caribbean elders. I learned firsthand from many of them how generations were scarred by legal involvement and the legal systems. In Brownsville, I met the oldest human being that I know. She was 103 years old, and when I met her, and I know she would have so much, she would have so much to say about our topic today. Second, I'm a licensed clinical social worker and a practicing psychotherapist. I work with older adults in the community clinic in East Harlem, again, another neighborhood with a concentration of older adults impacted by the legal systems. Finally, in my role as a forensic social worker, I've learned in depth about the vast challenges experienced by older adults trapped in cycles of disenfranchisement, legal involvement, and cycles of no real resources or help. And like Councilmember Mealy asked, I'm going to present a client example. Our existing parole system bars elders from humane and timely release, and then it trips them up constantly every step of the way when they ultimately return to the community. Take, for instance, the story of an elder client whom I will refer to as Mr. Jones to protect his confidentiality. My colleague and wonderful attorney Catherine Perone and I currently work with him. Please bear in mind that Mr. Jones is 82 years old. There's his story, there's two parts to his story, one before the emergency reentry hotels and one after, so that you can hear the distinction. Mr. Jones was released on lifetime parole in 2019 at the age of 79 after serving over four decades in state prison. When he was released, COVID was lurking just around the corner. He also, as others have shared, returned to New York that was entirely a new universe than he remembered, a dysphoric universe with cell phones and metal cards instead of phone booths and subway tokens. His family in New York had dwindled away over the years, and while incarcerated, he also developed Alzheimer's disease and a host of other health conditions, often accelerated in prison. Mr. Jones was never permitted to have his case go before the parole board, and in 2019, he was finally released to parole with no reentry plan to meaningfully integrate into his community at the age of 79, and he was left to the elements with little to no family or financial support in New York. And no, he was not connected to programs such as Osborne Association. Eventually, his family from out of state tried to come and help him settle into an apartment, but that was full of challenges too. And he was arrested on a parole warrant in early 2022. He was remanded on that warrant and incarcerated at Rikers for failure to maintain appointments with parole. Picture the tragedy and absurdity of expecting an elder with dementia with no appropriate supports whatsoever, and an elder who never heard of a cellphone or a computer in his growing years to track his parole appointments. While remanded at Rikers for failure to keep his parole appointments, Mr. Jones waited for his parole hearing date that never came. They changed his parole hearing date several times. One day, he fainted and was brought to Bellevue Hospital for emergency care, where he was diagnosed with having contracted sepsis. Mr. Jones, an elder with the highest risk to die from complications of COVID, was allowed to languish in Rikers by a failed parole system, and he could have died. A writ was filed and ultimately denied despite his old age, despite his risk for COVID complications, and in spite of his near-death experience while on the island. Ultimately, Mr. Jones was released to parole again in early 2022, and he was able to return to the community. However, he had no place to live and no supports he knew of in the city. Thanks to the option of Mockjay Emergency Reentry Hotels with its low barrier to access, with the need for housing being the criteria for housing, Mr. Jones was able to get a hotel room in one of the emergency hotels. There, he was able to begin to stabilize after decades of incarceration and instability. He was able to get a private room with some peace and quiet so that he could sleep at night amidst his dementia and health issues. He was able to use a private bathroom without fear of being assaulted. He was able to get a hot meal three times a day. He was able to have clean laundry. He was able to get a medical treatment plan. He was able to get his first-ever cellphone, and he was also able to learn how to use his cellphone. Without this emergency hotel model, an elder like Mr. Jones would have yet again been cast away by our society, and he would have been without a home upon his return to the community from Rikers. Without his emergency reentry hotel room, Mr. Jones could have been immediately violated on his parole, as he would not have had a reportable address. To finish up, in conclusion, older adults are national treasures, and even more so during this devastating COVID-19 pandemic, when mortality among people 65 and older in the United States through the end of last year was at 75% of the total COVID-19 mortality. In this regard, we at New York County Defender Services strongly support and urge the city council to pass the Resolution 241. For elders returning home from jails and prisons, a group of people who pose little to no risk of rearrest upon release or safety risk upon release, we ask that the city and the state ensure that they have a robust reentry plan. We ask that the city and the state expand access to senior living programs such as those at Ulster Correctional Facility. Unfortunately, such programs are only available toward the end of incarceration and not throughout, and that is something that needs to change. We ask that the city and state protect and expand on the low-barrier emergency reentry hotel model, which has been a life saver for so many New Yorkers, as many have testified today, and including Councilmember Wrestler, who spoke about it. We ask that all older adults have supportive housing and access to reentry initiatives for elders, even as they prepare for their return home, such as the programs that Osborne Association spoke to. We urge that elders have coordinated programming and services and not programming in silos in the community specific to their needs that include onsite healthcare, technology assistance, education, employment, pro-social services, and wraparound services. I want to highlight the testimonial earlier about asking about disability assistance for elders. We also strongly support and urge the city council to pass Resolution 156-2022 in support of treatment, not jail, in order to provide timely and necessary medical care and related services for elders. In closing, we believe that thriving families and communities with fair access to resources and our collective care for all, especially our elderly, are our only path to community safety. Thank you all, and good afternoon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you to this panel. At this time, if there's anyone in the room who would like to testify but has not done so yet, please indicate. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to virtual testimony. Our first panel virtually will be Christina Green, Ingrid Gordon Patterson, Laura Roan, and Julia Solomons. And we'll start with Christina Green. Please wait for the Sergeant-at-Arms to call time before you begin your testimony.
Your time will begin.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Christina Green. I'm the Director of Marcus Garvey Supportive Housing, the first residential program of the Osborne Association. For nine decades, Osborne has been committed to transforming lives, communities, and the criminal legal system, including focusing on the needs of older people in prison and jail and offering reentry services, that programs and services inside jails and prisons and in the community. My program offers 52 units of permanent supportive housing to older adults who have served at least seven years in prison. Not only do we provide housing, we also provide supports to give people the tools in order to be successful, including programs. We collaborate with organizations like John Jay for Tech Support, JASSA, who you just heard speak, for Health Homes at Institute for Family Health, and many others, also offering social supports. The topic of this hearing and the residents of Marcus Garvey that testified today and many others are very near and dear to my heart. I also am an elder reentry, and if it wasn't for organizations, well, the Osborne Association, I wouldn't be where I am today because I am also an elder reentry myself. The need for reentry housing cannot be overstated. We refer to being released as coming home, but far too often, this term makes a scary, unstable, and confusing reentry experience. In preparation for this hearing, we convened a discussion among residents and staff at Marcus Garvey. Importantly, the staff who work at Marcus Garvey, including myself, are formerly incarcerated, and the supportive community that exists there can be felt in the air when you walk through the door. Many who were part of this discussion had served decades inside, and all of them came home over the age of 50. Together, these 16 people represented 322 years of incarceration. What I heard among many challenges was loss, trauma, frustration, and pain, cumulative exposure to inhumane conditions, randomly applied rules, racism, violence, abuse, and substandard, even unethical, medical care. But I also heard incredible persistence, courage, and self-advocacy. They also discussed very concrete areas in need of improvement, which are outlined in my written testimony, and are additional recommendations that grow out of Osborne's extensive experience providing release and parole preparation and reentry case management for older adults. I wanted to quickly mention two concrete recommendations for the older people detained on Rikers. Older people on Rikers need access to consistent medical care, but instead there are countless missed medical appointments and lapses in access to medication, often due to lack of officer escorts. This can have dire and even deadly consequences. There should be an assigned unit of officers with a captain or deputy warden that can ensure people have access to medical care with their medication. Dedicated housing should be established on Rikers Island so adults are housed together. With a current population of around 800, it may be possible to house this group in a single facility with an enhanced medical presence to meet their needs. We hope you will support investing in communities and expanding reentry housing. Marcus Garvey's 52 units were filled in no time, and we already have a very lengthy waiting list. While we work to expand available housing, I urge the council to also pass the Fair Chance for Housing Bill so that those with prior convictions are not discriminated against. In closing, I urge the council to pass Resolution 241, a calling on the state legislator to pass the elder parole and fair and timely parole bills. Far from keeping us safe, lengthy incarceration is weakening families, communities, and causing unnecessary harm. Thank you, Chair Hudson, for championing the needs of all older New Yorkers, including those who are formerly incarcerated.
Thank you so much.
Next, we'll be hearing from Ingrid Gordon Patterson. Please wait for the Sergeant-at-Arms to call time before you begin your testimony.
Time will begin.
Ingrid, are you on? Ingrid Gordon Patterson?
I'm here.
You can proceed with your testimony.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and once again, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. My name is Ingrid Gordon Patterson. I am a case manager with the Osborne Association at Marcus Garvey in Brooklyn. I couldn't afford you all today with the burden from my past and mixed emotions in my heart. I spent years giving to others that was imprisoned, physically eventful. I was broken, distraught, disappointed, and demoralized by the justice system I believed in. Today, I'm thankful for the time I spent in prison. My life was feared, fed worse than death, when I was comatose by COVID, helped and cared for by the men and women of Beckford Correctional Facility, inasmuch as I also witnessed the disparities in healthcare and mental healthcare services. During those seven years, I realized that the people I spent time caring for, even my family, did not care about nor my children. I went to work police and was discharged feeling even more dejected because of the conditions in the facility and the complete lack of support. My reentry to society was solely left up to me. I had to find my resources, not even a pamphlet of the location of a job center was given. What needs to change is discharge planning. It should start the day one enters into the penitentiary system, whether it's short or long-term. Short-term challenges will always be there. However, it is of my perception that anyone who spends three or more years incarcerated often faces the uncounting task of the obstacles to navigate an unfamiliar system for identification, social services, health benefits, housing, and transportation, all needs to be addressed. I believe with all the legalities and security clearances involved in an individual's release, why is it not possible to have a valid state ID upon discharge, which should include a pre-application one to six months prior to release for social services with a finalization for the released individual that it's upon them to complete this action within 48 hours? For me, I was given $40, not enough to go to for social services and home all in the same day, and yet told partially, there's something in the system you cannot get. Reentry is not an individual issue. It is a collective process of collaborations with various disciplines focused on quality of life and mental health. There's a need for more program opportunities for women, particularly over 50. Work opportunities to highlight the achievement of the individual through education and self- rehabilitation. For individuals with professional licensing, there should be some kind of program geared towards reinstating license, even with limitations and plans for progression. Reentry is not food stamps. It is not about not wanting to work when one spent years paying for a crime in a system built on routines and with no corrective or rehabilitation placed. It would benefit everyone to look at what that individual has done to show growth and rehabilitation, much like the pre-sentence report that was created for the purpose of looking at the person before the crime, which has unfortunately lost its true purpose. There should now be a post-sentence report to highlight the accomplishments during incarceration, which would help potential employees to see that one is not their crime. In a society supposedly geared toward second chances, the stigma of incarceration needs to be addressed by recognizing the importance of reentry and the continual need for opportunity- to be addressed by recognizing the importance of reentry and the continual need for opportunities to vital employment. Let's move forward and allow reentry to be seen as a valid tool that will eventually show that it is vital to recidivism and can be seen as a tool of diversion for incarcerated individuals, knowing that the foundation to build their lives with reentry that stems from their progress, initiative to change, and not having to worry about the ever-present walls that creates the barriers. Reentry should not be about social class or financial status. Reentry is an inevitable consequence of incarceration. In the end, the question still remains. It is to provide services to meet the set of standards. If the service is tough, the people there are supposed to promote
Your time has expired.
quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we're moving on to Laura Roan. Please wait for the Sergeant at Arms to call time before you begin your testimony.
Your time will begin.
Laura?
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Laura Roan, and I'm here speaking to you from two perspectives. The first is in my professional capacity as a service provider at the Osborne Association, someone who's worked with hundreds of older adults coming home from prison. I've been side by side with reentering elders as they went through the tumult of reentry, picking them up from prison and providing case management. Prison is an inhumane place for most older adults. Imagine you're a typical incarcerated 60-year-old. That means your body is more like that of a 75-year-old. You've got arthritis in your knees, which makes walking and stairs painful. You've got poor eyesight and hearing. Your cell's on the third floor, but meals, medication, programs, showers, they're on the first floor. Officers' orders can be impossible to hear over the din of the 499 other men who literally lock in cell block with you. Sometimes the officers are physically rough with you because you don't hear their orders. Sleep can be impossible between the music, the yelling, and the pain that you feel. Prison staff won't give out anything beyond Tylenol for the arthritis. Though you'd like to go to programs, meals, and showers, sometimes you just can't face the walking and the stairs, especially the shower with no grab bars and slippery floors. With 70 men showering at once, the sound is deafening. You can't wear your glasses, it's foggy, and the one officer that's in there can't see or hear anything. So if you fell or if someone hurt you, no one would notice. So you decide most days to skip it. And when you shower a few times in a row, when you skip that shower a few times in a row, other incarcerated people bully you, and staff might not want to work with you or assume you have mental health or cognitive issues. Some people hear these kinds of scenarios and say, but couldn't you just request a move to the first floor? Maybe. Sometimes that would work. Then eventually, you get moved to a new prison and have to keep requesting it over and over, and sometimes it just doesn't work. Sometimes the programs are on the third floor or the cafeteria is, where the whole prison is built on a hill. My point is that you don't make accommodations for these folks because it's not accommodation that they need. It's to go home. We must stop solving all of our problems with incarceration. The U.S. is the most incarcerated nation in the world, ahead of Russia, South Africa, El Salvador, Rwanda. Americans aren't awful people that need to be locked up. It somehow became trendy to lock everyone up in the 80s, like it was cool to wear those fingerless lace gloves. Somehow, we came to our senses on the fashion side, but not on the justice side. We also incarcerate longer, and it's those additional years that mean people are released sicker, more isolated, and farther behind on things like technology. Each additional year behind bars costs them dearly and has zero public benefit. Maybe actually, we just call that public harm. I said at the beginning, I'm here to speak to you from two perspectives. I'm also here speaking to you as a survivor of violence. Despite the fact that the person who hurt me could have spent a lifetime behind bars, I don't want that for him. I want a system that recognizes rehabilitation, remorse, and responsibility. So I urge you to speak up for those older adults who are locked away and can't speak for themselves. They're right this minute leading classes, building furniture, cleaning floors, being victimized, and dying without anyone noticing in prisons hundreds of miles away. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to Julia Solomons. Please wait for the Sergeant at Arms to call time before you begin your testimony.
Your time will begin.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chair Hudson and committee members. My name is Julia Solomons. I'm a senior policy social worker at the Bronx Defenders. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak today and for highlighting this important and unfortunately often under-resourced issue. First, the Bronx Defenders is in full support of Resolution 241 regarding the passage of Fair and Timely Parole and Elder Parole Acts. The passage and implementation of these bills is long overdue because our state legislature has been afraid to act. In addition to passing this resolution, we propose additional actions for the city to take to reduce the number of pretrial older adults languishing in jails and the reentry support that we need the city to fund that would improve their chances of release. We've heard many people today share their heartbreaking stories about their struggles to access housing upon release, and our experience supporting clients reentering is the same. Being a justice-involved older person means significant barriers to accessing housing: chronic health issues, discrimination based on one's criminal history, extreme limitations due to sex offender status if that applies to you, and the list goes on and on. Luckily, the city already created a solution to this problem, and we've spoken at length about it today. The Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, MACJ, created the Emergency Reentry Hotel Program at the beginning of the pandemic. We had been discussed at length today, so I won't repeat what everyone has already said about how incredible this program is, but I do want to emphasize that this was unlike any reentry resource that had ever existed in New York City. For the first time, advocates had an immediate, barrier-free housing option to offer people in jail and prison who otherwise had no place to go. The admission process was fast and easy, and when I say fast and easy, I mean, we would send an email, we would give some basic information about our client, and they would receive confirmation of a room. And transportation was provided directly by DOC directly from jail to the hotels. So this barrier-free aspect of this resource, I can't stress enough how critical that is. The hotels received some of our most vulnerable clients that were otherwise barred from traditional housing options. So we were glad to hear MACJ say on the record today that the eligibility criteria for the hotels will remain the same when they become transitional housing this summer. But I do want to note that as a social worker who often refers people to different housing options, traditionally, transitional housing has more barriers to entry because it's intended to be longer term. There's usually an application process, sometimes an interview. It just traditionally takes more time, and that was not the case with these hotels. It was immediate and emergency, and I just want to stress that. Additionally, I want to emphasize that this resource was decarceratory. We used these hotel rooms to successfully convince district attorneys and judges to release our clients regularly. Regularly at the early start of the pandemic, when there were rooms available, those rooms directly contributed to our clients being released. As of now, however, the hotels have been at capacity and unable to accept new residents for at least a year. So that has not been the case for the past several months, nearly a year, that we have not been able to use the hotel rooms in order to get our clients released. So others have mentioned that MACJ closed three of the hotels late last year, and that also resulted in the residents that are currently there moving into double occupancy, most of the residents moving into double occupancy rooms as opposed to single occupancy that the folks referenced. And I want to clarify that our information is that the waitlist for the hotel program remains close to 400 people as of the beginning of this month. And I want to note that that number does not reflect all of the people that are waiting in jail and prison that could benefit from this resource because advocates have not continued to add people to the waitlist in order to prevent people from having false hope that they might get in when we know that they haven't been accepting new residents. So I just want to stress that the transitional housing beds, 950 transitional housing beds that MACJ spoke about earlier, is not enough. 150 SAR-compliant beds that are currently completely full is not enough. We need both. We need both the emergency reentry hotels to continue functioning the way that they did at the beginning of the pandemic, where there were rooms available that we could refer people directly coming out of jail and prison, and we need transitional housing, that people can stay for longer periods of time, receive ongoing support, and work towards permanent housing. And we also need investment in permanent, long-term housing so that people can move through what we call a housing continuum. That's what this is. It's emergency, then transitional, then permanent. We need all of it. So I just want to say that we are here to ask the council to permanently fund the MACJ Emergency Reentry Hotels, emergency housing that provides barrier-free, holistic social and support services, including humane medical care, and offers residents access to vocational and educational opportunities as well as pathways to permanent housing. And we're happy to discuss this further with anyone that would like to. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We're going to be moving on to our final virtual panel. We have Derek Bowers, Imani, Andre Ward, and Assembly Member Harvey Epstein. We're going to start with Derek Bowers.
Your time will begin.
Thank you. My name is Derek Bowers, and I'm the Regional Director of Social Enterprise in New York City for the Center for Employment Opportunities, also known as CEO. Thank you to Chair Hudson and Chair Rivera, as well as the members of the committees, for allowing this hearing to happen and these important issues. I appreciate the opportunity to submit testimony about our program model and work across New York City and how innovative initiatives on aging and criminal justice intersect with our work in the reentry space. CEO's mission is to provide immediate, effective, and comprehensive employment services to individuals recently returning home from incarceration. And as the largest provider of reemployment services in New York, we serve individuals on parole and probation supervision with an intentional focus on serving individuals facing the most significant barriers to remaining free from incarceration in the criminal legal system while also returning $3.30 for every dollar of public investment. So in addition to passing Resolution 241, we would like to see a targeted investment in reentry program services for older New Yorkers, specifically around funding for direct cash assistance. CEO has piloted and evaluated the employment impacts of providing financial assistance upon reentry through our Returning Citizens Stimulus Program. The RTS program helped individuals meet employment milestones, find, secure, and maintain employment, and increase their financial stability. CEO and our local partners distributed $4.1 million in reentry cash assistance to over 1,600 formerly incarcerated individuals here in New York City as they engage in vocational training during the COVID-19 pandemic. Early evidence suggests that financial assistance upon release from incarceration does improve recidivism outcomes and may help stabilize formerly incarcerated individuals as they transition back into their communities. CEO encourages this council and administration to support funding for direct cash assistance for reentry program participants, which would specifically assist aging formerly incarcerated New Yorkers coming home. Finding meaningful work after incarceration proves to be our dress, especially for older adults, many of whom may have difficulty engaging in physical activities or may not have the technological skills necessary for non-physical jobs. These individuals support challenges during the reentry process to include securing safe and stable housing and obtaining employment places that we believe cash assistance will be pivotal during their journey reintegrating back into their communities. And I would now like to share a story from one of our participants, Ronald. Ronald worked on CEO's transitional workforce, sanitizing New York City Housing Authority properties to keep residents safe during the height of the pandemic. Alongside his CEO wages, his RTS payments allowed him to keep up expenses: food for the house, clothing for his son, and the family's bills. It also helped him to save for a rainy day. And so with the support of CEO, he was able to land a full-time job. And for Ronald, the Returning Citizens Stimulus payments gave him a financial cushion to deal with any possible emergencies. For people coming home, Ronald told us, the program gives independence. And so we believe that these are sound investments that the city can and should adopt through the budget. And at CEO, we don't just put individuals to work, we help keep them out of prisons and jails. Thank you for your consideration of these recommendations.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. We'll be moving on to Imani. Please wait for the Sergeant at Arms to call time before you begin your testimony.
Your time will begin.
Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. Yes. I wanted to say that for the disabled people that are coming out of incarceration, they do need like a place that's accessible and adaptable, also vehicles as well. It's not easy, you know, when you're coming out, and it's not easy, period, for us to maneuver. So that's why, you know, the groups and everything, I believe that, you know, I believe that group funding is not helping enough. The groups are not helping us disabled people enough as to stuff that we need and require. So that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll be moving on to Andre Ward. Please wait for the Sergeant at Arms to call time before you begin your testimony.
Your time will begin.
Thank you to Chair Hudson and Chair Rivera for convening this very important hearing. You know, as Associate Vice President of David Rottenberg Center for Public Policy at the Fortune Society, and as someone who served 16 years in state prisons, I submit this testimony in support of both bills and respectfully urge the council to pass Resolution 0241-2022 in support of two critical pieces of state legislation, Elder Parole Act and Fair and Timely Parole Acts. You know, while we're discussing state legislation today, you know, it's important to note that the first person to die on Rikers Island this year was 65-year-old Marvin Pines. And Mr. Pines, who suffered from seizures, is held in an orphaned infirmary command, which is a unit for people with acute medical conditions and disabilities. And, you know, he had accepted responsibility by pleading guilty in a nonviolent case that was directly tied to his addiction. His death while in custody at Rikers is really a sobering reminder of the dangers that incarceration poses for our seniors. You know, the Fortune Society has been around for over 55 years as an organization, offering support and reentry services to people that are formerly incarcerated, and we promote alternatives to incarceration to strengthen the fabric of our communities, and we do this solely by believing in the power of people's capacity to change and building lives-to-service programs shaped by experiences of our participants. Many of the people we serve were incarcerated for decades and released as citizens, or rather, senior citizens. And Fortune was a part of the CARE Task Force, which serves as the only interagency task force focusing on elder reentry in the country that was established by city council. And the task force developed detailed recommendations that may require an interagency body to ensure progress is made. One thing we know for certain is that the numbers of aging people in New York State prisons have climbed steadily over decades, even as the overall prison population has fallen, due to harsh sentencing laws, parole processes that focus entirely on people's past actions as opposed to their current state of rehabilitation and remorse. Yet in prison, often completely transform themselves, accepting responsibly for their past actions, taking advantage of opportunities for growth provided within the prison setting, and even creating new ones and mentoring their young peers to do the same. We see such transformed individuals among our Fortune participants every day. We also have seen firsthand the challenges that our elder participants face when they come home, usually because they know who their family they turn to after such long periods of incarceration, physical health issues that might be less severe if treated properly sooner, unaddressed trauma greatly exacerbated by incarceration, lack of financial resources, and homelessness. And while people over the age of 55 make up less than 20% of all Fortune participants, there are nearly half of the participants we serve in our continuum of housing. They also comprise over 32% of the people we serve through our Care Management Division, helping people with chronic health needs navigate the medical and mental care system. Now, while Fortune's housing supply is limited, we prioritize providing supportive housing to this older population of people who have served significant prison sentences because their needs are so dire. The alternative for them is all too often the streets or shelter, which we have heard throughout testimony can quickly prove fatal, given their age and medical conditions. We opened what is called the Mandela Community to provide supportive housing to people aged 62 and over who have been seen